Good morning. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order and start our day and our meeting off with prayer from Reverend David Smith of the Word of Life Church.
Thank you, Jesus, for this day that you have made. We rejoice in it today and we pray for this City Council of San Angelo that you give them the mind of Christ today, that they have wisdom concerning our community and the surrounding area. We pray for rain in the Concho Valley today. Father, give us grace and mercy. And we thank you, Father, for the peace of Israel, that you give them peace over in the Middle East today, Father, in this conflict. We thank you for this day, Jesus, that we have your mind, your will, Father, your anointing, Holy Spirit, for this day, for this council, in Jesus' name, amen.
Sometimes Councilman Adams makes me feel like I'm doing the limbo back there. He's trying to see, trying to see if I can suck my belly in enough to get by. I have a helper this morning, Megan Thompson. She's a kindergartner and she's the daughter of Juanita Thompson in water billing and Stephen Thompson in information technology. And unlike many of us adults, she knows the Texas pledge, so it's pretty good stuff. You ready to help me?
All right. (inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Great job.
She just pushed you out of the way there, Al. I'll tell you what. Well, I have two daughters, a little older than that, and I kinda liked those days, so... Okay, we have one recognition today. Is Mr. Lozada here? Come on up. Be joined by Ramon Lozada. He's an employee of the Concho Valley Transit District for his effort in assisting a fellow citizen in his time of need. Outstanding. Let's recognize you. Special recognition, whereas every day throughout Texas and the other, and other cities across the nation, citizens reach out to help others in need. And whereas Ramon Lozada was performing his duties as a transit driver for the Concho Valley Transit District on Tuesday, November the 6th, 2012, noticed an individual had been on a bench for several hours. And whereas Mr. Lozada stopped his bus and encouraged the individual to get on the bus, all the while recognizing that the individual was not feeling well and possibly having a medical emergency. And whereas Mr. Lozada immediately drove his bus to a nearby fire station seeking medical attention and help for this unfortunate individual. And whereas Mr. Lozada, by observing his surroundings, helped a fellow citizen in a medical crisis by getting involved and providing the needed assistance to prevent a possible tragedy. Now therefore, I, Alvin New, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proudly thank and applaud Ramon for his effort in assisting a fellow citizen in his time of need. Outstanding. Thank you. Public comment. The council takes public comment on all items in the regular agenda. Public input on a regular agenda item will be taken at its appropriate discussion. Public input on an item not on the agenda or a consent agenda may be identified and requested for consideration by the council at this time. The council may request an item to be placed on a future agenda or for a consent agenda item to be moved to the regular agenda for public comment. So, council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove items five, six, and eight to the regular agenda, please.
Okay. Others?
Thank you, Ms. Farmer, for item number eight. I was going to ask for that item also.
Okay. All right, I have five, six, and eight removed to the regular agenda.
Motion to approve.
Sir, I also would like to table an item, okay, from the regular agenda and move it to a future agenda. It's item number 12, the discussion and presentation on the Water Conservation Credit Program. So if maybe you could help me with that?
A motion to approve consent agenda excluding item five, six, and eight. And can I include extending, okay, and additionally extending, not extending, tabling item number 12.
Second.
Okay. Let me call for that vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there public comment this morning? All right, then let's move on to item number five.
Mr. Mayor, I do have public comment, a comment, a comment to make. I have been contacted by numerous individuals, and I shared this with Mr. Valenzuela, but it seems like, you know, we've, you hear all these crazy stories out there about water billing and going crazy and $14,000 bills and $10,000 bills. One thing that's been brought up to my attention, and I, I mentioned it right now so I don't forget, for maybe we can look at it as a future item, but the $25 late fee that's being applied to the accounts, I'm not saying that we don't need late fees, I think we do, but I think the $25, I don't know where that amount came from, but some folks feel that it's kinda exorbitant, maybe a 5% fee or a 10, I don't know. I don't know the answer, but I'm just throwing that out there, that some folks feel that that $25 is, especially folks that have various accounts. I know one lady had two accounts, paid two late fees, and tried to get her due date changed, couldn't do it. So I just assured her that I was going to throw that out for discussion at a future meeting, so I'm doing it now, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we can go through that as a future agenda item. One of the things that I know is being done is explanation of, oh, the statistics behind how many problems there are with billing and, and also I know some things are being implemented that are, that are overdue, but I'm glad to hear, related to exceptions reporting, where if a bill is below, you know, is zero or negative, it'll be kicked out and somebody will look at it. And if a bill is 200, 200% of normal for a meter, it'll be kicked out and looked at. So I know we are making some, some adjustments to how we're doing things to help stop these things from happening in the first place, so. But I appreciate you bringing it up. We'll get it on as a future agenda item. I know that while we're in public comment, I need to be sure that, that I remind the council, I have a family-related engagement tomorrow and I'll be unable to attend the memorial that will be held at noon, but I'll remind everyone that, that there is a memorial tomorrow at noon for the Hunt for Heroes folks.
Mayor, they start at 12:15, just to note.
Okay. So it's scheduled at 12:15?
Correct.
At Kids, Kids Kingdom, right?
Yes.
So it's to allow folks to get to the lunch hour and then get to the memorial. Anyway, so I bring that up for folks that are here and that might be, might listen to this or what have you, that it's at Kids Kingdom, it's at 12:15, and, and I, you know, I was remiss for not asking Reverend Smith to think about that, but, but the, you know, there are the, the folks with Hunt for Heroes that are, that administer that and put that together, and they're all hurting and need our prayers and our support, and the city of Midland and, and the folks involved there with that parade, they need our prayers and our support, and obviously the heroes need our prayers and support, and their families. And so I just remind everybody of that and that that's going to be tomorrow at 12:15 at Kids Kingdom, if you'd like to go show support for that group, okay? So any other public, public input before we move to the item number five? Okay. Item number five, this is consideration of adopting a resolution accepting the U.S. Department of Justice fiscal year 2012 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant. And it was submitted by Police Chief Tim Vasquez. And Ms. Farmer, how about walking us through that?
Okay. Five and six, again, we can consider at the same time, with six being consideration of authorizing to apply for a grant from the Texas Preservation Trust Fund, the Texas Historical Commission. Right quick, I just want to talk about the two of them. I want to ask Mr. Dane if any kind of auditing or accounting procedures have been put in place to track these grants.
There are audit procedures associated with our external audit and...
I understand that. I'm asking internally, have we set up a program yet? And I believe the answer is no.
You're correct.
Okay. What I would like to ask, since the answer is no, and I, I've been asking for us to do this for about seven months and we just, it's high priority, I understand, but I've gotten to the point that's past high priority. What I would like to do is for all of the grants that we have granted and participated in in the last two years, I'd like to see those itemized on a list by department, the dollar amount, the date they were granted, the date funds were received, and how the funds were dispersed, and what they were dispersed on. In this particular instance, this is for bulletproof vests, which I'm all for, it's not a problem, but I want to know when the vests are purchased, how many were purchased, how many we have in inventory. And this is nothing other than keeping up with the public dollar, the grant, and how it's being spent, and that it's being spent at time and manner, okay?
Sounds good.
Motion to approve item five and six.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on item five and six. Any further conversation or comments from council? Okay, any public input on these items? Call, go ahead, sir.
I would say that in regards to the bulletproof vest grant money, the city pays for all the vests upfront, and then we get reimbursement for half of those vests from that grant. In order for us to comply and get that money, all the officers have to, we have to have a policy in place that says they will wear their vest. And so basically, that money comes to us, the check goes right into the account to cover the vest.
And you spend?
All of it.
I know, you spend all of it upfront. You get reimbursed, does the money go back into that account for, or does it get the tracking of it, just where it goes?
Yeah. I think it's the real accounting is what, and that's what, it's stemming from the last meeting, too. It's the same topic, it's just the accounting of the grants.
Okay.
And I'm not looking for any one item or picking on one in particular, it's just all grants.
Okay. Further, further public comment? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Outstanding. Item number eight, second hearing and consideration of adopting an ordinance reestablishing a nighttime curfew, hours for minors and related matters. Ms. Farmer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had received several phone calls and emails with reference to our not following policy on public meetings to allow the public to speak on this, and it's a very simple process, we can pull it from consent agenda and allow the public to speak. We certainly don't want to keep anyone out of the loop, and I contacted the chief and asked him to be prepared to go through it and then allow public comment.
Thank you.
And I received a similar phone call with the same concerns.
As did I.
Okay.
Do we want him to go through the presentation or just?
That's part of the clarification, is that there was a technical problem with the presentation in which the public could not view it.
Right.
And this is more detail, I'm told, than in the past, and people would like to see it, so they can comment on it.
Could not view it, like, from our website?
Right. We were, we had, we had the paper version, is that right? Or we had the, we had electronic version, but that's what it was, but they couldn't show it on the monitor, which means they couldn't show it on Channel 17. And so the public at home could not see it, and even in the audience. It was just the council. And it's a lot of good information, really. It was very good.
Okay.
We ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Let me just stop, please. As you know, we, we come back every three years to ask for the renewal of the ordinance. And I remember we were looking at the date, there was some confusion on the date, the other day we got that figured out, right? Okay. We first started the curfew in 1996 because of the amount of crimes that we were seeing involving people or children under the age of 17. We had seen an increase in gang violence, as well as gangs, juvenile gangs. I'm not going to go through the ordinance unless you specifically want me to, but there it is on the screen. It tells you what the ordinance entails. It says any person under the age of 17. When we enacted the ordinance in 1996, we also had a daytime curfew, which we do not have the daytime curfew anymore currently. The prohibited hours, 11:00 PM to 6:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, and 12:01 AM to 6:00 AM, Saturday and Sunday. Correct, yes, Saturday and Sunday.
Will you mention the defenses?
Absolutely. There are multiple defenses to protect a child under the age of 17 that's out and about. Number one, they could be accompanied by a parent or guardian, they could be on an errand at the direction of the parent or guardian without detour or stop, and I think that's self-explanatory. Involved in interstate travel, engaged in travel to and from work employment without detour or stop, involved in an emergency outside their residence, they can actually be in the front yard after hours and be okay. Attending an official school, religious or civic function, exercising their First Amendment rights, married or emancipated in accordance with Texas law. And then obviously, before we take any action, we have to determine the age and the business of that minor in order to be sure that none of the defenses exist. And I'm going to give you some of the data. You can see from 1995 to 2012, you can see some significant decreases in crime. One particularly was disorderly conduct, 1995, 420 cases, and in 2012, 80, so far, 85. The ones that we're really, really concerned about was the assault. When we talk about the, the curfew, it's not just to keep the bad kids out of, from being out at night, but it's also to protect those juveniles, the potential victims. So we went from 375 assaults in 1995 to 157. Criminal mischief, 256 to 68. Deadly conduct, which is drive-by shootings, basically, or pointing a gun at someone, we went from 16 to zero. Our runaway count went from 662 to 362. And theft, which many citizens would be a victim of, went from 447 to 102. Here's our contacts. Well, in 2000, this is where we have, as far back as the data that we have, you can see we made almost 1,200 contacts in 2000 compared to 500 contacts right now. And this is during curfew hours. This is the type of interaction, you can see which ones were victims, offenders, and witnesses or others involved. Again, you can see a pretty significant decrease over the last 12 years in both the, or in all three, the offender, victor, victim, and witnesses. Curfew citations in 2,235 and currently 38. And I would say that this because we had the, the curfew has been instilled in our, in our community for so long that parents understand, some parents may have even gone through the curfew when it was enacted, now they're parents, but they know that this is the way San Angelo operates. Contact to citizen citation comparisons, you can see pretty significant decreases as well. We believe it's an effective tool, it's helped us. Obviously, the numbers don't lie, it shows you that crime has gone down, juvenile crime. We have less juvenile offenders and we have less juvenile victims, which is very, very important. And we haven't had any issues with, matter of fact, I've been the chief now over eight years and have not fielded a single complaint where a child or a parent came in and complained that their child was detained inappropriately because of the curfew stop. And again, we believe this is part of our neighborhood vision, and that will do it.
Questions from the presentation?
I've got one. Chief?
Yes, sir.
What are we doing? I know we're being, we'll be televised and Matt Waller do his part, but will you put the curfew hours in the standard times or Quinac Tony Spiner or something?
Sure. We can, we can do whatever we need to do. We can, we can do a press release on it and say that it was, whatever y'all decide, if you choose to renew it, and then we can do a press release on that and reestablish the, the hours and the defenses, and we can actually send out a pretty good press release on it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Adams, second for Mr. Hurstfield, to approve as presented. Let me ask for public comment.
My name is Betsy Ryan, and I want to speak to the temporary nature of curfews in Texas and the importance of this review process. I'm glad Texas state law requires this process every three years. It gives me hope that one day, three, six, nine years from now, we won't have a curfew in San Angelo. That San Angelo citizens will feel safe enough not to need a curfew, not to want a curfew. Texas Local Government Code, Section 370.002 dictates that the City Council must review the ordinance's effect on the community and the ordinance's effect on the problems the ordinance was intended to remedy, and then decide, do we need to abolish, modify, or continue? This law recognizes that temporary nature. Texas curfews are put into place until a specific problem has been eliminated or reduced back to normal level. Then the curfew is to be abolished and freedoms returned to our young citizens. So we've had the curfew for 16 years, and so with six reviews, this process can become just a formality, time to renew the curfew, rather than review the need for the curfew. But formality or not, this process serves a purpose. This review serves as an accountability time for our police department, a time when the department can show the real need for the curfew and how they can't get along without it. I am very happy to see the PowerPoint given. During the past curfew review meetings over the years, to help evaluate our city's crime problems, I, along with other citizens, have asked the police department to provide more and more detailed statistics, and they have responded. I was encouraged by these details, and I got to see them because I emailed the police department and they sent the PowerPoint to me right away. So it was available, but not to the general public, only somebody who's really willing to pursue that appreciate it being shown. On certain slides, there was the slide seven, and since we've just seen it, I'm glad you can remember, that the crime is way down from that 1995. And an impressive chart for me would be to see the 16 years, because you could see that it's been down, and it's going down, and it's staying down. I don't know that, I haven't seen the exact, but I have my PowerPoints from previous years and I can kinda watch that happen. So to see really high and now low, I'm thinking of that temporary nature of a Texas curfew. And I wonder, well, are we basing this current need on things that have happened in the far past? What's, what's currently going on? Another helpful set of statistics that the chief gave, it was on slide nine, where it did show the juvenile contacts by interaction, and all of those were progressively going down. It gave years, when you get to look at the details for longer than just a minute, that is the years we've reviewed the curfew. And so I went ahead and emailed back Assistant Chief Fant and asked for the details between just the last section, between '09, let's see what, '10, '11, '12, and it did keep that consistent drop. And so if you were to show those, it would just tell us how well that's working. I know that you can go either way on that, it's working, we need to keep it, it's done its job, we need to be done with it. And so I want to at least think through that process. Slide, let's see, back to my notes. Beyond this mere formality, this process gives the police department a chance to show they are handling the curfew correctly, and I absolutely think they are handling it correctly, that the writing of citations is not being overused, we saw that on slide 10, and that no one's coming forward with a complaint. That's just something we're asking our, our police to do as they are available to do that through the, through those times. Finally, this review and discussion is a chance for the police to inform or remind parents of the details of the curfew. So I'm, I'm glad for those of you that asked that, that this be publicized a little bit. I think the curfew would be a more powerful deterrent. If that's what we're using it for, then I think it needs to be publicized. Either it's really useful and we tell people that it's there, or, or we don't. And many parents and teens do not know the details and are not clear on how the curfew works, because they see me do this every so many years, and so I talk to people about curfew maybe more than most people, and people don't know the ages, they don't know the times, they don't know that the parent and the child can be fined, they don't know how much the fines are going to be, they don't know that the business can be fined, and teens do not know what to expect, what will happen to them when they are stopped. We saw a long list of defenses. These are times when maybe your 16-year-old is going to be out. A person comes up to them, suit, clipboard, I don't know what they're going to need, and they come up and ask about a curfew. Now, I, I understand, I've asked this before, our police are not going to handle it that way. I'm talking about people that would fool our teens, try and impersonate someone. Here's how I came to this, this topic. When my son was of curfew age, we are past, wait, past this now, he asked me how he would be able to tell a stranger approaching him was a police officer during, doing a curfew check. How's a 14-year-old to know? I called the police department and asked that very question, and the juvenile sergeant's answer was, the person will have a gun and a badge. And that didn't really satisfy me. Our family policy was, you respond to a uniformed officer in a marked car, otherwise do not assume that that person is doing a curfew check. So San Angelo's problems of high crime and drive-by shootings are in the past. I believe other efforts by the police department, such as the gang unit and the DARE program, as well as community efforts such as House of Faith, are responsible for our reduced crime. I believe our police can maintain the peace without a curfew. When you think Texas curfew, I want you to think temporary. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So am I correct to assume that your only issues are that the report that we received from the chief is not detailed enough as, and, and that the information is not being given to the, given to the public with reference to the, the curfew?
No, I, my point, previous to it being reshown, was that if it wasn't reshown, all my efforts to ask for statistics just go away. And so I'm very happy with what they have presented, and they have presented that crime is down, and if the council wants to keep our curfew because crime is down, then that's, that's one way the logic can go. And if our council wants to keep it, or wants to get rid of it because crime is low, then I understand that. I'm happy with the statistics, I want them to keep at it. I would like them to show a little bit more currency when we do this, so I'm happy with it, the police department.
Okay.
I think the, the main problem was is the public not having the opportunity to speak on the issue coming up last council meeting, and it was on consent agenda this meeting, and the public to have the opportunity to speak how they feel about it, the purpose and how it's going, which is going successfully, and they're pleased with that, just not having the opportunity to have due process is what this morning was about.
I missed the first one, and so if I tell my friends, other people interested, come to this one, well, it's hard enough to get someone to come speak, it's very difficult to convince anyone to do this, and then to see it on consent agenda, it's like, forget it. They're not going to be talking about it. And so other people, had there been anyone else interested, they would have read it's on consent agenda, let's...
Terrific.
We'll give it three years.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
I have questions for the chief.
Okay. Chief Vasquez, please.
Will you go back to the defenses? Can you find that? You got, you haven't memorized. At the direction of a guardian...
How long is kids?
I have, I have six kids, and 14, 13, 12, and 11, here they come, they're going to get their driver's license, and they're at another house, say, and I direct them to come back to my house at 11:30 on a Thursday night. Is that legal? And they don't stop at Town and Country, let's say that Stripes or Allsups or whatever, they come straight to my house.
I, I would say by the, the letter of the law that they would have been in violation that they were out afterwards, however...
At, at another kid's house.
Yeah, at another kid's house.
Okay.
Because it says that you can be at your house, you can be on the front yard, but if it wasn't for any of the activities that, that he had listed, then they would have to present their case in front of the judge, and the judge is the one...
Terrific.
We'll give it three years.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
I have questions for the chief.
Chief Foskes, please.
Will you go back to the defenses? Can you find that? You haven't memorized. At the direction of a guardian.
How long is kids?
I have six kids, and 14, 13, 12, and 11, here they come, they're going to get their driver's license, and they're at another house, say, and I direct them to come back to my house at 11:30 on a Thursday night. Is that legal? And they don't stop at Town and Country, let's say that Stripes or Allsups or whatever, they come straight to my house.
I would say by the letter of the law that they would have been in violation that they were out afterwards, however.
At another kid's house.
Yeah, at another kid's house.
Okay.
Because it says that you can be at your house, you can be on the front yard, but if it wasn't for any of the activities that he had listed, then they would have to present their case in front of the judge, and the judge is the one that interprets the law.
Okay, so my 16-year-old is with an 18-year-old, and I've designated the 18-year-old as a guardian, is that legal?
Yes.
Okay, and so they can be with my child's friend's mom, that's legal.
Yes.
At their house, and when I send them home, they're technically not within law.
If they're with your guardian, like you just said.
Well, they wouldn't be, because they're 16-years-old and they're driving home after doing homework or something at 11:15 on a Thursday night.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
These are the my.
It's the same, but I.
That are different than many other cities, and Chief is correct, it would be a factual determination, but these are not only standards in San Angelo.
Oh, but I'm worried about San Angelo, and I'm worried about.
I would tell you that at that time of night, if you got the phone call from the officer and you said, you know, "My son or my child was over there studying, and I told them to come home," and they're coming straight home, your child's probably not going to get a citation. I mean, obviously, we wrote 32, I think was the number was, for 2012, so we're not arbitrarily handing citations out without putting some thought process into them.
And even if you did, I mean, the likelihood that Judge Gilbert or whatever would say, "Okay, you were doing a research project."
Yeah.
Okay. Because the fact is, I had a 16-year-old at my house the other night, they were doing homework until midnight, the teachers were stacking them with homework and the extracurricular activities, they do stay up late, they do homework, and they're with the 16-year-old home. I don't want them to get a ticket. I don't think that's right. They're under our care, we're sending them from one house back to the other, now if they stop at Stripes, I understand that that's deterring from the course, and then things can happen, and that's what we want to avoid. This is important to me, so I want to make sure that we're clear that that's considered. And if it is, then I can vote yes. If it's not consideration that a child can be sent from one house to the other, if it cannot happen, then I would want to change the ordinance to make sure it's clear that it can happen. So we're good.
Okay. Okay, sir. Mr. Morrison?
If I remember your defenses, Tim, one of the defenses was if a child is in route on a parent's direction, that it is accepted. So if the parent says, "Come home now," you're under the parent's direction, so it would not be an infraction.
Without detour. That's correct.
That's correct. So it's already covered.
Mr. Morrison, thank you. Mr. Alexander, does that sound?
One of the defenses is, "On an errand at the direction of a parent or guardian without detour or stop."
So if I tell my child to come home, and he's on the way home, he's under my direction, so he's not in violation of the curfew.
Which would be a defense to having been stopped and presenting the case, because that defense would have to be presented because the officer may have issued a citation based on the circumstances, but it's a defense. Right.
It's governed.
I'm happy with the ordinance the way it is.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. I have any further comment from council or questions? Do I have any further public input on this item? May call for the vote. Mr. Turner, come on up.
Just a couple of quick things. This is not the first time this has been up. This is a ordinance that has been reviewed multiple times. We've had some very serious discussions on it. It does need to be reviewed periodically to see if it's still needed, but it so far is doing what it's required. The second thing, there does seem to be some confusion that has been highlighted by this and a few other issues on the consent agenda. People think that because it's on a consent agenda, it cannot have discussion. That needs to be clarified numerous different places until people get the idea, just because it's on a consent agenda does not mean public has no input. It just means we think this is probably not going to be a controversial issue, but if you've got a problem with it, it needs to be discussed, get up and say, "I want this move so it can be discussed." Every item on the agenda is subject to public discussion, without exception. The only time you don't have public directly involved is when it's an executive session, which is a very special case dealing with very special matters. Thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
I referred to you by name, and then you.
Oh, excuse me, my name is Jim Turner. For those who haven't, don't recognize me, get it in the official record. Thank you.
I have one other question, and then I promise we can move on. Chief, at what point, where would the numbers be in order for us to say as a city, "We don't need the curfew anymore"?
I think.
Or where should they be? Is there a threshold for that?
You know, I don't think there's any kind of defined threshold. I think that would be up to the council to determine if there is a threshold. You know, you can make a lot of comparisons and a lot of what-ifs. I think it's proven that it's been effective for our community, especially decreasing juvenile crime and juvenile victims. But what is that number? What is that magic number? I don't have a magic number. I'm afraid that if we were to eliminate the curfew, we're taking a very good tool away from our officers, but you can tell that it's a tool that's seldom utilized because our community understands that there's a curfew.
I can respect it. Thanks.
Mr. Morrison?
I'd just like to say that Betsy Ryan is welcome. She is a consistent feature in this, and I have total complete respect for you, and I appreciate you. See you in three years.
In October. I'm going to watch, it's going to be on the head.
You've always been very professional in your defense, and I appreciate you, I look forward to seeing you.
Okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I'd like to move us on to the regular agenda, please. Item number nine. This is the presentation and discussion of the City of San Angelo Fiscal Year 2011 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by the city's auditing firm with a presentation by our city, spit it out, Assistant City Manager and CFO Michael Dane and the city's external auditing firm, Armstrong Backus &amp; Company.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor and Council. We went through this a few months back, where we had a lengthy discussion with the audit committee, brought it forward to council on consent. We've had a request from a council member to bring it back for open presentation and discussion in this open session. So that's what our attempt is today, and of course, we're available for questions and follow-up as requested. So with that, I'd like to introduce representatives of the city's external auditor, audit firm, Freddie Moore and Gaila Thornton.
Thank you, Michael. Yeah, I'm Freddie Moore, and this is Gaila Thornton, and we are the city's independent audit firm. First of all, we want to say thank you to the council. It's a real privilege for us to be able to work for the city. Thank you for this opportunity, and also a thanks and our appreciation to Michael and to Bill in the Finance Department for all the work that they provide in assisting us. This is a huge undertaking, of course, to perform an audit the size of the city, and it takes a lot of help from city employees. We really appreciate that. We're going to kind of do this in a tag team. I'm going to talk about the reports that we issue, and Gaila's going to talk to you about some of the findings that we have and some other matters the council has asked us to address. The work that we do as the independent auditors winds up in two, essentially three reporting documents. First is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR. And the CAFR, of course, is, it is the city's financial statements. It shows what it, its assets, its liabilities, its net assets, changes in its fund balances and the balances in all of its funds. The other document is kind of an audit-related document driven by the Office of Management and Budget and many of its regulations and requirements. That's called the Single Audit Report, and it deals with the city's handling of financial grants and expenditures of those. And then there, we do perform an audit of the passenger fee that's assessed and required by the FAA. Of course, the CAFR, 132 pages of information, and as I was saying, our work is really, our responsibility for this CAFR is to render an opinion. I mean, we're one page out of the 132 pages. These are the city's financial statements. It's the Finance Department, city council, of course, are ultimately responsible for the amounts in here. Our job is to render an opinion on these financial statements based on our audits. I'm glad to report that our opinion for, on the September 30, 2011 financial statements is an unqualified opinion. That means we noted no departures from generally accepted accounting principles, from governmental audit standards, there were no limitations on the scope of our work because information wasn't available or the powers that be restricted what we could do. So in the audit world, that's the gold standard for audit opinions, and I think that's a real credit to Finance Department of the city at large, that they are able to produce a financial statement upon which we can render an unqualified opinion. The other document that is prepared, or that we report on, or our reports end up in, is the Single Audit Report. There are two reports that are in there. The first is the Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and Compliance. That report is the result of our understanding of the internal controls that the city has in place based on our financial audit. We do not render an opinion on the city's internal controls. If we note instances of non-compliance or deficiencies, we're required to report those there. I'm glad to report to you that we noted no deficiencies in internal control from that report, so, or none that might be a material weakness, nor did we issue a management letter reporting other deficiencies. The other report that we provide there is the Report on Compliance Related to Major Programs and Internal Control Over Compliance. This is a report that's required by the Office of Management and Budget and governmental audit standards. We're required to go in and specifically test compliance items related to what we are identified as major programs. These relate to the grants of federal expenditures. We did, we did find two instances of non-compliance that the standards require us to identify as significant deficiencies. So those are reported in the Single Audit Report. There is a response from management as to those deficiencies, and Gaila is going to talk to you about what those are, and she's also, because of the volume, the sheer volume of information that's in this CAFR, she's going to hit some of the, what we would consider the financial highlights of the city's financial statements. So I'll turn it over to Gaila Thornton.
Good morning. I'm going to talk about your government-wide financial statements. There's two different types of reports issued in the basic financial statements, one being government-wide financials, the other being fund financials. The fund financials are what you guys are usually, you usually see on a monthly basis, reports fund balance for all of your funds. The other one being the government-wide statement encompasses the government as a whole, and the difference between the two types of presentations is that the government-wide statements include all of your capital assets, your infrastructure, your intangible assets, as well as your long-term liabilities. So it gives a complete financial picture of the status of your government at this time. And it also includes your component units, being Fort Concho Museum, Fairmont Cemetery. Your net assets, net assets being the difference between total assets and the government's liabilities, at September 30 were $215 million. You had assets, total assets of $494 million. $260 million of those were non-current assets, which includes all of the city's infrastructure and your water rights and some deferred charges. Your liabilities were $278 million of that, $24 million is current, due in one year, and then the rest was $215 million of your net assets. Your net assets increased $14 million over the previous year, so that was a good increase. I do want to bring it to your attention, though, that starting in fiscal year 2015, the Gatsby's issued a requirement that all of your TMRS unfunded liability be booked to your finances, and as of December 31, 2010.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part again?
Your TMRS unfunded liabilities will be required to be booked as a component of the statement of net assets. As of December 31, 2010, the value of those unfunded assets was $38 million. So in fiscal year 2015, your net assets will decrease probably in the ballpark of that. That changes every year, it can't give you a definite number, but just know that that impact on your financials is coming. And so that's the city's finances as a whole. Now I want to talk about our findings on the single audit. We had two findings on one particular grant, and both of them have a very common issue. The findings were that in August of 2011, you received the whole amount of your grant money, and as of the end of September, you had only spent a very small portion of that. And the federal compliance requirement is, is that you limit the amount of time between the time you get your revenue and the time you make your expenditures. And if you get that revenue in advance, you need to be able to segregate that in your financial statements so that you can pay back to the grantor any interest earned on those grants. Well, in this case, it was all lumped into the city's pooled investment in cash funds, and so there was no way to determine how much interest was earned on those funds that you received so far in advance. And the cause of that was the people in charge of administering the grant and the compliance requirements didn't have that accounting knowledge to understand the accounting component of that compliance requirement, and it was done at a department level and not by anyone with any accounting knowledge. The other finding was one of the quarterly reports on this same, oh, go ahead.
Excuse me, let me stop you right there, but when you're talking about the whole grant, are you talking about one certain grant or just grants in general?
It's a common occurrence with grants in general. The previous two audits, we've had the same sorts of findings, that the accounting aspects of the grants did not meet the compliance requirements. But this year, it was one particular grant, it was the grant related to the HVAC unit that you installed at City Hall.
That has to be spent by a certain amount of time?
The problem was is that you got the revenue well in advance of the time you made the expenditure. So you held on to the federal government's funds for an amount of time, interest was earned on those funds, and at the time of the audit, there was no way to determine how much interest was earned on those funds. The other finding was the same particular grant, there was a quarterly report filed with the federal grantor that did not match the actual financial information in the CAFR. I think it's important to note that our schedule of expenditures of federal awards that's provided in our single audit, we issue an "in relation to" opinion. That "in relation to" is to the CAFR. The information reported by the grants must be reconciled back to the information in your general ledger, and in this particular instance, it did not. And so, again, you have accounting people, non-accounting people at a department level monitoring the compliance, administering the grants, doing the reporting, and they don't quite understand the accounting components required by these grants. So those were our two findings. We also, on our passenger facility charge audit, had one finding, and that finding was that there were, there was expenditures reported in the wrong fiscal year, and it, again, is an accounting issue because the date of the expenditure happened in one fiscal year but was reported in another, meaning it was not accrued properly, and so it had to do with accounting being done by someone who doesn't quite have that expertise of experience.
But that is the first finding we've had in that since we've been involved.
Right.
That has been, not been an issue here to pull.
Right.
But that's nothing malicious, I mean, it was just somebody that didn't know what they were doing.
It was an oversight.
Right.
All three of these instances go back to having people in departments not being able to totally meet the accounting requirements issued by these grants. You have non-accounting people do that.
It's decentralized, too.
It is decentralized. I'm not sure that putting it in finance at this time is the answer, because finance is extremely understaffed. We're getting ready to gear up for our next audit, and the pressures put on by us to get certain things for our audit in addition to all their daily activities, I'm not sure that the answer is putting it in finance. I'm thinking a grant administrator, maybe someone even combined with an internal audit functions, just to make sure grants are covered as a whole. That might be the answer, but we do have that recommendation. And I can't stress enough how important. And I can't stress enough how important accounting is, having good competent help, having enough help, you know, with all of the, the things going on in the public these days, having the people in charge of, you know, covering internal controls, being able to have good, solid accounting records, being able to meet the grant compliance requirements. It's essential to the health of this organization.
And to provide you, you with the information that you need to run the city.
And that sounds something like what Ms. Farmer's talking about, you know?
I want to ask, of the criteria and the cause and condition and the effect that you have described in these three instances, you made a recommendation that what the city should do to prevent or to correct. Can you tell me if those recommendations have been met and put in place?
As far as I know, they have not.
Mr. Dane?
Our recommendation was that we, the city assign a staff person to oversee all of these grants, particularly the financial components of these compliance requirements.
Mr. Dane, I've already spoken as far as how we can move forward on that, to make sure that we do have an accounting-type person in that, in that area of responsibility. You just mentioned it, the possibility of combining the internal control position along with reviewing our compliance, also on the financial aspects of the grants. And that's exactly what we're looking at right now.
Thank you. And this part was just to let the public know out there that there is an external, external audit that is performed, and it is reported, and it is reported to the public so that they can comment. And it is also where we can ask what our deficiencies were and how they're being handled. You know, it's a big organization. I want the, the people out there and the public to know that it is huge. And, you know, like Ms. Silva says, there's nothing malicious or intent. Mistakes can be made, and they've been pointed out in these few instances and are being corrected and systems put in place so these same mistakes don't happen again. Thank you.
Got a question? How can we reduce our unfunded, unfunded liability? For example, the landfill has a $30 million liability because when we close it, we have to take care of it for 30 years or something. I'm just guessing at numbers, those are close. I mean, they're some, they're reasonable. So, we have this liability, so we're going to raise our fees to cover that liability. So, when, when this landfill closes, we have a coffer full of money to cover the liability. Because we start collecting that fee, does that reduce our unfunded liability, or do we have to actually get the money and put it in the bank?
Those are, those are engineering, based on engineering estimates of what the closure costs are going to be in the future. And I don't think that we can reduce that unfunded liability, or that, that future liability by generating current fees.
Well, forgive us, please. We have acted since the last audit, and we have made changes in our rate structure with regard to solid waste. And we've discussed the philosophy of beginning to collect fees and set those aside to generate assets to cover the liability, that future liability.
You may have a compensating balance there.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But we have to collect it first.
The question is, the liability won't be reduced, but the unfunded portion of that would be reduced by having offsetting assets that you have collected and set aside for that liability.
Okay, so it's going to take some years to work that $30 million down?
Absolutely.
I need to ask a question to follow up. The, the funds that were invested through the city's pooled cash and investment accounts was earned interest. Have we paid that interest back to the federal government on those funds to date? Has that been done? And was there a fine associated with not reporting accurately? Can you tell me that?
I don't, I don't know that. I'll have to look into that. I'm not aware of a fine.
I need a question.
I think a fine would have gotten our attention because it would be an unbudgeted item. So, I don't think there's-
And you don't know if the interest has been paid back to date?
No, I don't.
We need to look into that because it is a recommendation of this group. We certainly need to know the dollar amount on $867,000.
I, I too have deep concerns about it. I think there's more unfunded liabilities that, that we've had to address. Number one was our retiree insurance program, completely unfunded. And now, it's, it's still unfunded, but it's kind of migrated into the system. I think we've got one on the agenda later on, I mean, that is unfunded. So, I mean, we have to control these, get all this stuff under control.
The one that Gala was talking about a few minutes ago, that's just one that's been, that arose because of the Governmental Accounting Standards Board implemented a new standard that these unfunded, before this, they've not, they've always been out there, but they've never been required to be put on the balance sheet. Now, they are. It's going to affect the city's net assets. You're going to be, your net assets will decrease by the extent that that liability's booked.
It's, the, the key, though, there is that the, those liabilities existed in the past. It's not a change in substance, it's a change in the reporting-
That's true.
...requirements.
Well, I'm, I'm more to the substance.
Exactly. That's, and that's your point.
I, I want to make sure that the money is there to pay for that.
Yeah. And I think the first step in that is, is to having our financial statements properly reflective of what we owe. If we know that, then we can make a plan toward addressing that when those future liabilities come home.
One, one of my comments would be that, that I'm glad you guys came forward with all this, and my hope would maybe, again, you've kind of sensed a little bit of concern on the unfunded liabilities. If you see, hear, smell any others, we want to know them. I would rather know today that we've got a problem, potential problem, coming up with this and make sure that it is funded. And I, I believe we, you know, we, we know what those are, but to just remind all of us from a, from an outside, you know, independent point of view would be very beneficial to all of us.
You know, and, and one comment that I think Gala and I wanted to make is that we would appreciate your input as to any issues that, that, that you have a concern about. You know, we're just now in the process of planning for the September 30, 2012 audit. If there are things in there or matters that you feel or have a concern about, let us know at this point. We can build, tailor our procedures to address some of those things and get, get you some comfort that you might not otherwise have. Because, you know, we, we base our audits on materialities. You know, we're not going to look at a lot of smaller things, but we can tailor those in there if, if we think the council or department head has a particular issue.
I think, okay, well, I mean, I'll bring one up then, and then, but both of them are related to retirement accounts. For two years, I've talked with city staff about whether or not the expected rate of return makes sense in some of the retirement planning, particularly in the firefighter fund, where I think the required rate of return is something like 7.9% in a, in a time where, since 1998, I'm not sure that that's a reasonable expectation.
Yeah.
So, so I think you should look at that and, and take a look at it and, and force us to make some decisions. But those two rates of return are of significant concern to me, so.
I understand that. And of course, Mayor, those, those things are actuarially determined, and I'm, I would think they don't-
Well, and they're also state, you know, the TMRS is a state entity. The city's not going to step in and-
Right.
But at the same time, if you take a look and, and see a concern, then you, then you have the, you have the opportunity to say something.
Right, well, thank you.
I think, I think this is a good topic, good exchange. We have the audit performed to comply with legal and contractual obligations. We utilize the audit as we navigate investment and debt markets. But, the audit is performed for you. It's a product which is yours, and it is, your active participation is, is terrific. We, we appreciate it and invite it.
What's the amount of time?
Go ahead.
What's the amount of time that the federal government gives local municipalities when they decide to change a criteria for an audit? For example, you just mentioned how our city's-
Unfunded liability.
Assets would be, would be affected. How, how much notice do they give, give the local municipalities when they make changes like that?
It varies. You're very lucky that this particular Gatsby that's been issued isn't in effect until 2015. Some, maybe a year, maybe two years. But when it's this substantial, normally they give, I would say, three years would be a good estimate.
Okay. Mr. Morrison?
My question is directed to Daniel. You're the new one here. You're stepping into this. My question would be, are you satisfied with the depth and the brevity of this audit? Or would you like to see a more in-depth, top-to-bottom audit, so that you know exactly what you're getting into? My question is, are you satisfied with this level of audit?
I'm, I mean, as far as what I've seen at this point, yes, I'm satisfied with the level of the audit that we're seeing at this point. And basically, what's being pointed out right now, if there's anything in particular on your point of view that you'd like to see in there, absolutely, you know, that's something that we like to take a look at. As far as the information that's been submitted, there's a standard procedure that is followed, of course, and that's exactly what was done here. But I do understand what you're saying, and that there is an opportunity for, you know, to add or to take a look at other areas, definitely let us know, and we'd be more than happy to, to work with you on that, too.
We certainly would like to have dialogue with the city manager.
Sure.
And I think, I think you ought to be involved in this to a very great extent.
And I will be.
Because if you want a more in-depth audit, I'd be glad to propose it. So, I want to know exactly what's going on. And I appreciate what you're doing, but there's different levels of audit, as we all know. Thank you.
Okay, further questions for them on the presentation or further discussion? So, what's our final grade?
You got an A.
Got an A.
With an A-stri-
With an A-stri-
Or an A-minus. No, not even that close.
I would like to add that it was one of the most pleasurable audit committees for me to work with, and I've worked with a bunch of them over the last 30, 40 years. And it, it was pleasant, as pleasant as audits can be.
I just don't see how you could have been on an audit committee for 40 years, but very young.
Over the last 40 years, I have been in many audits.
Were you eight years old when you started, or was that?
Thank you. What do you want, Mayor?
Is there any public input on this item before I've? Okay. Thank you all very much for the presentation, and let's call for a break right now and come back in about 15 minutes, please. Call the meeting back to order and, and start with item number 10. This is a presentation of the Chamber of Commerce Third Quarter Reports Related to Economic Development in the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Council. I'm John Diggan with the Chamber of Commerce. In addition to what had already been sent to you, I think she just passed out the spreadsheets for the marketing plan for 2012 and the draft for 2013. So, you'll have those and you'll have that information. And I apologize for not getting those in the original packets. I've, I've had a really busy month and have been traveling for the last three weeks. So, Hope didn't realize that they needed to be in that packet, and I didn't realize until today that they were not there. That being said, what you have in your packet is showing the normal activities that, that we always show from the, the Chamber of Commerce going forward. You also have that marketing spreadsheet, which is broken down by month. It shows really an overview of the plan for the year, which included the target industries, the organizations that we represent within, and then the marketing by the month as we go forward. You'll also see in the draft for 2013, that's being expanded as we move forward. Some of the things that you'll see on that, and I'm going to give you the, kind of the highlights of that as we walk through kind of the strategic plan piece that was attached to your packet this time. What we want to make sure that the council understands is that we are using the strategic plan and are moving forward with that as, as we go there. And what I've tried to do is give you brief notes on a lot of the information that, that we have been assigned, and it is broken down specifically by the activities directly from the strategic plan itself. And some of the things that are going on there and what we're, we're moving toward. What you'll see in that is the marketing outside the community, which is the target industries. As you know, what we try to do with a lot of our marketing efforts is go specifically to those target industries. We're going to see some adjustments probably next year, but as you'll see, from the standpoint of the target industries and very specifically going to specific organizations and going out for specific shows, you'll see that this last year that we had planned for Windpower 2012, which we attended, we went to the World Ag Show because that's also one of our target industries, that was in, in California. Just came back from the SEMA Show, which is the Specialty Equipment Marketing Association. We had about 140,000 people at that show this year. It was huge. And we got a lot of really good contacts as we were going around the floor on that one, and we think it's, it's going to be a good show for us. A lot of small manufacturers there, and a lot of them are interested in Texas. We also have a new one on 2012. I got the opportunity and have joined ICSC, which is the International Council of Shopping Centers, because that gives our retail component that we've been looking through on the strategic plan, some efforts. I'm looking for additional shows that we can go to. I think what we may want to do is relook at wind for next year. With the production tax credit in jeopardy as it is, then I'm not sure that that's something that we need to be really focusing a lot of our energies on, even though the strategic plan basically shows that as one of our target industries. That being said, the other thing that we've, we did this year is we hosted the Lone Star Solar Summit. So, we've had a solar show, summit here for the last two years, brought in both manufacturers and also people that are leading in the industry. We do believe that alternative energy will continue to pair well with our area and with what we've got available here, and I think we need to continue to support it. But with the activity that we're seeing in the oil field right now, I think from an energy standpoint, we probably need to be focusing a little more on that, and I think we're going to see some more short-term opportunities there. And I'll talk about that in a minute on, when we talk about the businesses that we're actually working with right now and going through. Our print marketing, I try to base with the shows that I'm going to. So, if we're doing print advertising in specific types of magazines, it's the magazine that's being handed out at those particular shows, because that gives me a double shot at those folks, and it also allows me to point back at the magazines that are actually in the booths for those folks. So, we're, we're moving forward to support that. Again, on the strategic plan, part of what the chamber works with is the support of Goodfellow. As you know, we make a trip to Washington every year. We support Goodfellow in various ways. Phil has worked very directly with, with you and other folks within the community to help with the transit route, and I think that's been very successful this year, and will continue to do that and continue to work that as part of that strategic plan piece, but also something that we've done for a long time, anyway. Tourism support, you're going to hear from Pamela in a minute on tourism and what's being done. One of the specific pieces within the strategic plan was working on lodging. You'll see that the chamber has been working directly with about six different entities right now that have some interest in putting lodging into the community. So, that's out there, that's working, and that's, that's available. One of the other things that, that the chamber has been very involved in is the support and continuation of the Young Professionals Group. We're trying to build the Leaders of Tomorrow, because that's where our economy's coming from. So, we're very, very interred in doing that, and will continue to do that as part of that. We have worked this last year on airline possibilities and have worked very closely with the city and those partners to try to increase the airline activity within the community. We also have been supporting the airport, and again, we'll talk about another company that is based out there that's, that's looking at local expansion, that it has to do with the airport as well in just a minute. Medical is another piece within the strategic plan that, that we, as the chamber, support. We take that kind of on a case-by-case basis and have been working very hard to, to make sure that we understand what's going on within the community. One of our local hospitals came and was looking at the possibility of some expansion, and I was able to help connect them with a different type of funding than they'd used before. Now, whether that will happen or not, I'm not sure, but I was able to help them set up meetings and get more information on that. So, we're, we're working in a lot of various ways to try to support, especially the local companies, but also looking at those outside. Mexico is another big issue that we have within the strategic plan. As you guys know, city staff and I visited Guadalajara earlier this summer and have made some contacts there that we think can be very helpful. As we look at businesses across the border, they have some interest in doing more in the United States, and we feel like we're in a great position for that because of where we're sitting and because of our proximity, actually, with that. So, we're continuing to work with that group. And this particular group represents about 150 different companies in Mexico, so we think there will be some future opportunities there. We've been very active in ports to planes and will continue to do so. Not only do we support those events when they come here monetarily, but we also try to make sure that we have either Phil or one of our representatives at the majority of those meetings, and I think we've made all of them this year going along with that. The other thing that, that we have been working with in Mexico is the Torreon Canastra, which is their, their chamber, has been up to visit with us, and we basically hosted them about a month ago, and will continue- a month ago, and we'll continue to work with that relationship. We think we have some opportunities in Torreon with some of their manufacturers. They also want to look at some of the things that we might be able to send down their way. So, we're trying to develop some relationships that we can continue with, and we'll, we'll look forward. One of the other pieces of the strategic plan, of course, is, is looking at local businesses. We're working very hard through the BRC and through the things that are going on there. As you guys know, they got their temporary CFO, city staff has already moved in. We see the other partners that'll be moving in as we go forward. What my plans are for, for next year is part of our Brett program, and I talked with the mayor about this and the possibility of him helping host. One of the things that I've done in other communities and that we've seen in other communities is actually hosting quarterly breakfasts for local businesses to come in and not only talk with the economic development partners, but also talk with some of the city officials. Helps them get more comfortable with city government, helps them gain knowledge, and in our case, it also helps us showcase the Business Resource Center, which we put a lot of money into, and we need to be utilizing in the best way possible. So, we're going to try to host those there on a quarterly basis, bring specific businesses in, and really make sure that we're making connections with that business community through that. I'm also working, sorry, I'm also working right now on a new web portal for economic development for the city of San Angelo. What we are trying to do is use the Advanced San Angelo URL, which was part of the initial strategic plan piece. What we're building is a portal website that is kind of a rollover that represents all of our partners, and what we would like to do is direct all of our economic development partners, as well as all of our marketing potential, to wwwadvancesanangelo.com. Right now, I have a website, city has a website, SBDC has a website, workforce has a website, everybody has their own website. When you start doing searches for economic developments in Angelo, Texas, my page normally comes up through the chamber first. We, we have several others that come in behind it. What we want to do is direct everything to this single page that will have connections to all of our websites and webpages directly, so we can send everything there, they hit one button and go to either chamber, city, wherever else, but it's that one-stop shop. What it is, kind of a virtual Business Resource Center, is what I want it to look like. And so, we're working on that right now. Stephen McLaughlin is, is doing some work for us on that, and we're going to be actually talking with him next week on some presentations, and what hopefully that's going to look like as we move forward. We feel it's a perfect blend and pairing with the Business Resource Center itself. It gives us the virtual piece, as well as the physical bricks-and-mortar piece that we'll continue to do. We'll continue with training support. I'm going to move our Economic Development Council meetings, which is part of the chamber, and we do every month, to the Business Resource Center for 2013. We've got great meeting space over at the chamber, but I think it makes absolute sense to have our, our partners and our business leaders going into the Business Resource Center as much as possible, so we're going to utilize it in that way, and we've gotten that on the camera, and we are, on the calendar, and we will have a large grand opening that, that we'll be hosting after the first of the year. We want to get everybody in and get everything moving, and then, then we'll, we'll have that blowout for that. So, those are all the things that, that we're working toward on the strategic plan. Well, they're the highlights. The other information is, is there in the packet, so you can kind of take a look at it. From a standpoint on very specifics, what I have done is gone out and looked at year-to-date on what we're looking at. After the last meeting and some of the questions that I had, and as I said at the time, I, I don't think that we're giving you guys all the information that you need in order to understand what we're doing on a day-to-day basis, and that's why this is probably a little bit longer presentation today, but also to give you very specific information. I've gone back through records and year-to-date currently, I've talked with about two hundred and thirty-two different businesses outside the community. Now, that being said, one of the things that, that I have a real concern about, and I've talked with the Costa DC Board about this and the reporting that we do to them, I, I can give you guys very inflated figures, because we do a lot of responses to state leads, and, you know, there may be five or six hundred jobs attached to some of those. We do a lot of those, we talk to a lot of different groups. What I try to do is really talk about the things that we think are really germane to the community, and we think that we have a real shot at. That being said, I think year-to-date, 2012, we've talked with about fifty-eight prospects for the community, with the possibility of coming here. And as part of that, and, and just to share kind of the success stories of 2012 so far, as you guys know, one, one major company is starting up here. We have worked with them, all of our partners have worked with them, everybody has worked with MedHab. You guys helped with the incentive piece on that one, and we look in the future to not only a great, great corporate citizen and an enhancement to the community, but also the potential of about two hundred jobs. Secondly, we've, well, second and thirdly, I've been working with two local companies in the last year, both of which have accomplished expansions, both of which, well, one of which came for help through Costa DC, and unfortunately, they did not choose to help because they were outside the city limits. However, that expansion has moved forward. I helped connect them with additional funding sources through the state and had numerous meetings on those. So, I, I'm out there working in the behalf of these businesses, even though you may not see it through Costa DC, or Costa DC may not see it, we're, we're working to make sure that those businesses are being supported. We have another one that just finished an expansion, moved into a new building, and chose not to come to Costa DC for any additional incentives at this time. However, we were able to use cornerstone funding from the chamber to help them in their expansion and help support that as we've gone through. I also did connections with them through the city, we had meetings with them, we talked with city staff about the possibility of incentives, and they chose not to go in that direction. So, e- even though some of these companies are not coming through Costa DC necessarily for incentive, does not mean that we, as, with, within our day-to-day activities, are not working with them and trying to get them moving forward. Of those three, we've got two hundred and thirty-six new jobs within San Angelo projected over the next five years. So, we feel like that's, that's a pretty good shot for our community. The other thing that we're seeing here is, we're seeing an upturn in the economy overall. If you look at our MSA, we're about fifteen hundred jobs ahead of where we were last year, non-civil, I mean, yes, civilian jobs. So, looking at that and looking at the conversations that we're having with the larger employers within town, on a twice-a-year basis, because we work at, that is part of our marketing materials, we talked to the nineteen largest employers within the community to find out what's going on, where they are, and what's, what's moving. We're in the process...
Tell me what you just said, that the, how many jobs ahead?
Oh, I'm sorry, which one? Fifteen hundred on the MSA, for, that's basically Tom Green County.
Right, fifteen hundred jobs ahead.
We have fifteen hundred more jobs this time, this year, than we did this time last year.
And how many of those are oil-related?
Quite a few, quite a few. But that being said, as, and that, that was kind of my next, next thing, as I'm talking and as we're working with these, these nineteen companies, and I don't have everything in yet, but it looks like of the nineteen largest employers within the community, there has been a net increase in jobs of about two hundred and fifty. So, it is not all oil-related that's coming through. We are seeing our, our other services moving forward, and that, that's going to be natural, because as oil-related goes up, those folks are spending money within our community, there's more services required, so we're going to see continuation of jobs moving through that. Employments are up at the airport, sales tax has been up for the last twenty-six months. We know that that's, that's moving ahead, so all of those things are looking good for the community. We have very little downturn. I mean, we're seeing construction up, we're seeing all of those things moving in the right direction. From that standpoint, currently, I've got ten companies that I'm working with directly right now, today, have been working with over the last few months. Of those ten, I believe probably five will be here. Of those, three of those five are oil-related, and we are seeing a huge turn, upturn in oil-related companies looking at the community. One of those companies has already bought property, but they have, have positioned themselves outside the city limits, so it's not something you will see from an incentive standpoint from Costa DC. That being said, that doesn't mean they're not here and they're not hiring people, because they are moving to the community. We are also helping them through workforce, we are helping them with the partnerships, whether it be to enhance their business plan through SBDC, whether it's something that we can do specifically at the chamber, and we're having those meetings with those companies as they go. We have another company that we feel like will come to Costa DC for incentives. We think that that will, will probably bring about seventy jobs within the community, and we feel pretty confident, because we've been working with this particular group for several months. It is a startup, but we think it's going to work well, and we think that they will position themselves within the community, is what we're, we're understanding. I'm also working with a company right now that's out of Canada. It is oil-related, but it's actually a manufacturing piece that would bring seventy jobs from Calgary to San Angelo. Two of these companies that I'm working with right now are very interested in the business park, which would be wonderful for our community to be able to get some traction out in the business park and to be able to move forward. So, I've already talked with the Costa DC Board about that, and we're going to try to see if we can't entice them into that particular area. Both of them need to build buildings, and both of them are willing to build their own buildings, but if we can put them in that property, it'll work.
Thanks. For semantics' sake, where is that?
I'm sorry?
For semantics' sake, where is that business?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Industrial area?
The Costa DC-owned, city-owned business park, out on the loop.
Okay.
It's out there, right now, we have an empty building and one building that's being occupied, and then we have a, a large improved area that we have availability of. If we can pull a couple of new companies into that area, I think it will help jump-start it.
What kind of products, or what, I mean, what general industry?
One of them, very specifically, is a water company that supports the oil field. However, with what they do, with the, what they use, they use very light equipment, and that's one of the things that, that is a little more conducive to the business park, because we don't want really heavy machinery running over those roads all the time. Everything that they do, they take out to the field. They are working on a new, well, it's, it's a new project that will help recycle the fracking water, and they can actually reclaim and reconstitute about sixty percent of it. So, that's, that's one of the ones we're working at. The other one is, it is a company that basically recycles and refits pipe, and they have a, a very specific patented process they've been doing for many, many years in Canada, and are looking at the possibility of coming down here with that particular industry, because most of their business right now is in the West Texas. So, we've, I've had them visit twice so far, and we're continuing to work with them. They have not met with Costa DC and/or the staff with that group, because they're, they're trying to convince their board at this point that they want to make this move, and, and they're not ready to move forward with that. That being said, with what we've got on the list and in the pipeline for 2013, we think there's a, we're, we're looking at the possibility of about a hundred and seventy-five jobs. And, and we've got those five other companies that I'm talking to, they may or may not make a move out here, it may or may not be in San Angelo, but my guess is even if they decide not to locate directly here, they're going to be in one of the surrounding areas, and those folks are going to be shopping here, and they're going to be developing jobs for our, our region. So, we think all of that is coming. We have been very fortunate to have several of our local oil groups, energy groups, referring some of the businesses they're doing business with, and then we work those contacts and, and try to make them move forward. So, we've, we've had a good year, we've got a good pipeline going, we think there are some things that are on the horizon that, that we can, can work and work better. I think we have to relook at, especially alternative energy right now as a community, because of, it, it is very prominent within the strategic plan, but with what's going on, I think we need to, to really be cautious about that. But that, that also being said, we do energy in West Texas better than anybody does it. We've seen oil and gas for years, and we know that, that product. We also know that it, it has peaks and valleys, so we need to be cognizant of that, but it's going to have a huge impact on us, as it's having on the Permian Basin right now. We're seeing more and more people looking in this direction, because they simply cannot house their employees, they don't have the products and services within these areas, because they're being so glutted right now. We're going to see an upturn, I think, in our real estate within the community, and we're going to see an upturn, again, in our sales tax, simply due to what's going on out in the oil fields right now. And I've taken up a whole lot of time, but I, I really wanted to give you guys a little better overview of very specific cases of, of some of the things that, that we're working on, and also wanted to make sure you understand that we're working diligently to make sure that strategic plan doesn't gather dust on a shelf. We're, we're trying to hit all of those pieces to make that work. I met with city staff last week, and we're, we're actually working on kind of a, a new process that I think will help in the reporting on that, so it'll make it a little clearer for you guys and for the boards that are working toward it. That being said, what, what questions can I answer?
Questions? Well, Com, I just really appreciate you working from the strategic plan as a model or a base for forward movement and progress and measure of success or not.
That's why it's there.
That's right. We spent seventy-five thousand on it. I said that was going to be a drop in the bucket, and it's only a drop in the bucket if you guys use it the right way, and it sounds like we're in the right course, and we will profit from it as a city.
We have, between the partnerships, I mean, I, I have lead in certain areas, city has lead in certain areas, our, you know, SBDC has lead in certain areas, we've, we've, we've kind of gone through that process, and everybody has, is, is working in that direction. We've tried to prioritize the things that we think are going to be more low-hanging fruit in shorter term, but that being said, we'll continue to, to get at all of those as we go forward.
One thing you said that's important to me, that you talked about the wind energy and, and how things may or may not change, and how that would impact the strategic plan, the marketing plan and so forth. One of the things I want to make, and I, it just sounds like you are, and I'm, I'm not challenging that you are, I'm encouraging that you do. For instance, the World Ag Expo.
Yes.
You know, you attend that a couple of times, and you, you come up with something, great, you keep attending. You don't come up with something, go fish somewhere else.
Agree.
I don't want us to just be in the habit of going to something because it's there, and I'd want you to tell me, well, what, what happened in, at the World Ag Expo in 2012? Did we get any leads? Did, what, did the follow-up come up with? Was it worth going? You're going again, it's on your 2013 plan.
We touched base with about a hundred different organizations from that particular show. We did follow-ups after the fact. To date, we don't have anything that has come back and said we want to move to, to West Texas.
So, you wouldn't want to spend a lot more time fishing there?
No, but, but there are some opportunities there, and I'll be honest with you, that's the first time I'd ever gone to that show, so I think we do have some opportunities, since that's part of what we need to do. But I agree, and that's one of the reasons that I'm saying I don't think we're going to do wind power this year unless something strategically happens. I mean, if, if production tax credit comes up with another five years, which I don't think it will...
I'm not saying you shouldn't go in 2013.
I understand.
I'm saying you shouldn't schedule 2015.
Right, right, right. No, and, and that's the thing with the strategic plan, I think what we have to remember, or what we have to, to be aware of, is things change within the economy, and just because last year wind production was on the forefront doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be next year or the year after. We, we have to look at those things, and we have to be able to have an understanding that, that that particular document needs to expand and contract as we need it and change, the strategic plan.
Without question.
Yes.
I did, I had a thought just now.
Yes.
You know, at Texas Tech, the research center that they have out at Reese Air Force Base?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's not just about wind energy.
No.
It's about, anyway, just challenge you also maybe to think a, a little broader about wind.
Yes.
And opportunities related to tornado damage control and some other things that still might make sense.
And we have a partnership with Texas Tech and work with that group, and I think we'll see those opportunities.
Questions?
Yes, sir.
Got a couple of questions. You know, you talked about the cornerstone funding and providing...
Yes.
And we, we all got the report, it's Time Clocks Plus, you helped in expand. How does that work? Is it just a, a chamber member only that applies for help like that, or how do you work with outside businesses?
In this case, in this case, because cornerstone investment is really through the chamber, we really look toward those chamber members to try to help them out. In this particular case, there, there were some concerns from the company about publicity and anything that expanded, and, and so there were some concerns about actually going to Costa DC for help. So, went back, talked with Phil, we talked with our board, and they agreed. So, went back, talked with Phil, we talked with our board and they agreed that, that we could help in a very small way, frankly. I mean.
What's, what small way? What?
It was about $11,000.
Okay. What is our, I'm looking at your balance sheet right here, but what is our year-to-date cornerstone fund balance?
Phil?
Any idea?
Ninety? Yes. Oh, no, the, what we raised this year.
We have nothing to do with the cornerstone fund, correct?
Seventy-six thousand.
We have nothing to do with the cornerstone?
No, that's Chamber.
No.
It's Chamber. But it allows us to.
I understand that. I'm just saying that that's y'all's separate money that.
True. Yes, sir.
And then the last one, if you can elaborate, what, the development project you talked about on MLK, can you, can you talk about that? What? In your notes, it says something about a development on MLK, development project.
I'll have to look back because I don't remember which one that one is. That's, unfortunately, the fallacy of these reports being three months prior to, I sometimes forget which ones are which. Yes, it is.
And what is, I know what WTO is, but what is a project or what's that development? Just loans or?
Well, it's, we, we went and worked with that partnership to try to, to help with that retail corridor.
Okay.
And we're hoping to move forward and assist them. City was there as well and they're working with it. So, it was just part of the partnership to move forward.
That's all I needed.
All right.
Thank you.
Quickly.
Sure.
I'm glad to see that you're, you're being, you're watching the wind industry very closely because I, anyway, we'll see how that all pans out.
Right.
The solar tax credit expires next year?
Yes. And we have no state solar. So, until we get to that point within the state, and I don't anticipate that.
Right.
It's, it's something that I think we need to keep on the peripheral and the good news is, is if we can host the summit, then we have people coming in, they're spending money in our community, so that works well for us. And we can certainly help sponsor that and move forward with it, but until we as a state decide we want to set that as a priority, we're probably not going to see that. That being said, however, we actually had a meeting with a solar broker and I had that meeting with city staff and they are looking toward the possibility of a solar array from a company that would like to invest in the US. Now, whether it will happen or not, I think it would be a very long shot, but something that you might be seeing in the future from city.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Pamela Miller with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, giving the third quarter reports for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We assisted third quarter with 26 conventions, meetings, sporting events or motor coach tours. The projected attendance was 9,615 people with the projected room nights of 3,009. The average length of days spent was 2.5 days and there was a total economic impact of On page 14 of your packet is our marketing efforts for the quarter. We responded to 8,598 advertising inquiries, that's for additional information from our advertising, 35,695 webpage inquiries, 461 phone inquiries, and we welcomed 2,382 visitors to the visitor center. As of the end of October, our top three cities for supplying individual tourism at the visitor center were San Antonio number one, Houston number two, and Austin number three. The top out-of-state, the top two as of the end of October were Ohio followed by New Mexico and our top international was Germany. On page 15 of your packet is the most updated for this quarter copy of the Smith Travel Report, which showed our occupancy up for September 29.3% and our average daily rate up 12.4%. Our year-to-date up 18%, 18.1 on occupancy and 9% on average daily rate. I received at the end of the day yesterday, the newest report for October of the Smith Travel Report, which has us up. October was a busy month for us again and we were up 25.9% for the month and our average daily rate up 13.6%. And I wanted to point out that this is the 22nd month in a row that occupancy has been up. Some of the, the site tours that we hosted this quarter included the District and County Clerks of Texas. We were wanting to get their 2014 conference. First, the convention site committee came in and then we had a second site visit by the full board. We did get that piece of business, it'll be here in June of 2014, about 400 people. We also had a site tour for the Texas Cattle Raisers Association for their 2013 conference. We did not get that one, that was about 200 people. Mr. McGlaughlin even helped me with that site inspection. The Narco Terrorism Conference, we had their site inspection in July and they came in August, about 150 of them, and that looks like that's going to become an annual conference for us. Also, Mr. E. Dan Klepper with Texas Highways, he came in for help to put together a story on art, history and the fort. And I did put a copy of that in your packet, it begins on page 33 if you didn't see it. It was eight pages plus back cover, so very good for us. Also, Augsberger Algemeiner, which is a German newspaper, they're going to be doing a story on us which will run this spring. Also, Travel Host came in to do a site, they'll be doing a story on the 15th anniversary of the Forts Trail, which is next year. July was a really tough month for us. We had numerous occasions where we could not find rooms for both our groups and individual tourists. Two in particular, the All-Star Girls Fast Pitch had provable room nights of 1,135 room nights. This is a conference or a tournament that comes to us on a three-year rotation and the planner talked to me that if it was going to come back and we have a possibility of bringing it back in two years, we needed to do better at finding rooms for these girls or we were possibly going to lose it. So, we went and talked with ASU, it was summer, we were able to use dorm rooms and bring them here and keep them interested in San Angelo for the future. But we did use 187 more room nights at ASU, so more rooms we could have sold if we'd have had the hotels. It happened again at the end of the month when we did Midnight Madness. We had 290 provable room nights and we had to put 100 more over at ASU. We attended trade shows this quarter to include the North American Travel Journalists Conference and I had media appointments with media throughout the country. Again, of interest to many of them is this 15th anniversary of the Forts Trail and both Bob Bluthart and I are on that marketing committee, so we're already putting together our follow-up for these journalists. We participated with the state, the Governor's Office on Tourism, put together a cooperative opportunity for the Calgary Stampede for its 100th year. Alberta supplies a lot of tourism from Canada to Texas, so they put together a co-op and we met numerous people that were coming or had been to San Angelo and were returning. And I would say equine, oil and gas were probably the two biggest reasons. We also attended Meeting Planners International where we had meetings one-on-one with numerous meeting planners. In September, with the help of the City Parks and Recreation Department and the Lilly Conference or the Lilly Fest Committee, we were able to add a day to Lilly Fest this year. We wanted to do something to make it become a two-day event. We actually did get a group this year of 40, they were all from out-of-state or international as far away as Japan and China, and we had a night prior event, the evening at the Lilies. And for a first-year event, we had 200 people that participated, so we'll probably be looking at continuing to do something along that line. Our advertising included See Texas First Fall Vacation Insert, that goes to every major newspaper in Texas and we've already got 1,600 requests from just that piece for further information. Also, Texas Highways, Texas Monthly, Travel Host, Texas Hill Country Magazine, Sports Destination Magazine, Texas Meeting Planner and Media Guide, the Texas State Guide, Texas Events Calendar, Facebook and Google Search. On pages 16 through 25 of your packet, I've given you samples of some of the advertising and also copies of some of the permission-based email blasts. In July, we also did cable that was on Fox News, History, Travel, Lifetime, Food, Discovery and Animal Planet. We did, did go ahead and drop the cable after July because we were full and didn't feel we needed to continue the cable. I'm pleased to tell you today that our sports funding application program won first place at TCC, Texas Chamber of Commerce Executives Conference this year for outstanding Chamber programs. It was based on quality and innovation and economic impact of a program. So, this quarter, funds that were allocated from the sports fund included $900 for the San Angelo Storm Indoor Football West Texas Shootout, the Bobcats versus California, we gave them $3,000. The Girls Fast Pitch Tournament, we gave them $3,287 and that was the amount of their loss for doing the event here. And the Doug McCutcheon Tournament, which is happening at the end of the month, we gave them $3,000. I also wanted to point out that last weekend, we had the Catholic Youth Conference here in town. This was just about the biggest conference we have ever had here, the Jehovah Witness one was, was bigger. We had 1,450 high school kids from Texas, Arkansas and Oklahoma and the organizer talked to me at the end of the conference to, to express his delight with the city. He was amazed at the hospitality, how well the convention center, the Coliseum, the fort, the Chamber and everybody that they came in interfaced with, what a great job we did. And we were hoping to be able to vote, to do the RFP process, to have them vote to come back again in 10 years and we're pleased to say that they're going to look at us again in five years. You might have seen the article in the paper yesterday, they had some nice comments in there about the city, but very pleased at the way everybody worked together in the community. And we even had our CVB Board, Advisory Board volunteers that were there helping with just the sheer numbers of the conference. And I might add that October is being really just like July as far as, or has been, in trying to find rooms for individuals and groups. We did have three groups, we could not get group rates for, they had to just go with whatever the rack rate was if they could come. And we tried to put some of the Catholic Youth Conference kids at ASU, but because school is in session and they had already had to do that because the Lone Star Volleyball Tournament was in town the same days, it was not a possibility for us. But we are talking with ASU about being able to do that in the future when we can. Obviously, filling the hotel rooms is always our first priority and we don't do anything until we've expired that. I've attached the latest copy of the budget, we're in great shape, the income continues to come in for occupancy tax, we're in our budget and if there's any questions, I'll address them.
Mr. Hirschfeld?
I guess on the Smith report regarding the occupancy of the hotels, any idea what percentage of our occupancy is weekly, you know, is the, versus, you know, the typical overnight type thing?
It would depend on the hotel. I know one of them that I met with recently said theirs is between 60 and 70 right now as far as oil and gas business. You know, some of the hotels get that business and some of them aren't, so.
Right.
It really would depend. They have shared with us that they would be at 100% if it wasn't for Sunday nights. So, those are kind of the quiet nights, even the conventions generally, we don't have a Sunday night stay.
Mr. Silva.
Pamela, I just, I was looking at your, The Lost Business by both Jenny and Kimberly. I see the reasons, but is part of it also the lack of rooms? Is that, is that playing a big part in us losing business?
Right now it is, we're trying very hard to keep reputation strong with the meeting planners that we are working with because the rate basically, not that it's not there, but if it is there, the rate is too high. In particular, motor coach, a motor coach operator right now can get a room on the Riverwalk in San Antonio for $79 and that same hotel here quoted them 159 a night.
Wow.
So, where are they going to overnight? That's affecting motor coach, it's affecting meeting business. We've told them to just hang with us, you know, we're, we're going to get some more rooms here eventually and once you have more rooms, the room rate obviously is, is going to go down a little bit. The biggest reason, like cattle raisers for example, in their case, they are used to a much nicer hotel. And when he walked out, he said to me, "Do you know the Overton in Lubbock?" And I said, "I've been there" and I said, "Yes." And he said, "That is the kind of hotel we stay in" and the hotel was not adequate. And we're still running into that, but now that it's getting up to full serve, that's getting a little bit better.
And my last question is, are we going to be okay as far as volunteers for the Christmas at Old Fort Cantio? Is Bob Bluthart going to?
We set out hotel bids twice for Bob and the second time, we did get a little bit better of a picture back, maybe a little bit higher of a rate than a lot of those volunteers wanted to pay, but, you know, you can get a room in San Angelo for $40 a night if you want to stay in that property. But we, we got some that averaged around 79 for him and we did get a note from Bob, from one of his volunteers, that said it was nice to have such a variety. So, lots of different prices, different properties.
And I guess really my, the question I was asking is, I know he depends on volunteers, local volunteers to help him run the program or the Christmas out there, so I thought I heard a while back that they were struggling in getting volunteers, so are we going to be okay as far as local folks to go out there and help run the?
I haven't heard that we, that we're not, so I would assume that we're okay. I talk to Bob pretty much weekly, so.
Okay.
And I might add that the conference last week that I was talking about, it did go to the Coliseum, to the convention center and to the fort and we had to use the stable building at the fort twice, split the group in half because it was too big for anything we had all in one location. So, it was also especially nice to have it the weekend before Thanksgiving, that's generally a really quiet week.
When we consider, I noticed that San Antonio, Austin and Houston seem to be pretty consistent with their coming to San Angelo and I'm just wondering, what is it about San Angelo that makes them come here when you've got San Jacinto, which is a historical place, you've got Gonzales, you've got Seguin, of course, you've got New Braunfels? So, what is it that you think is bringing those guys here on such a, such a consistent basis to San Angelo?
The surveys still continue to say we are a great place for a weekend getaway, they want to get away from the traffic, the people here are friendly, we have unique shopping, it's a great place to get out of the big city and, you know, you look at the populations in those three cities, that probably has a lot to do with why they're on the top of our list. But it's generally just get out of the city and enjoy yourself and relax.
And the German paper that's doing the story on San Angelo, in what city are they located in Germany?
It's in northern Germany near Hamburg.
Yeah, Hamburg, okay, okay. I think it's great that we have the relationship with ASU, that we have those guys have been a real, a real big help in us with our tourism, so I'm glad to see you guys working so closely with them.
We're working very closely and their new athletic director has been, has met with either Phil or I pretty consistently since he's been here and one of the things we're looking at is, you know, being able to find rooms for these tournaments when we're going to be bringing them in, but working very well with us.
Someone said I've got room at the funeral home.
Extra beds.
If, extra beds.
You did, at one point, you've probably heard this story before, but at one point, one of our volunteers in the visitor's center had somebody from Italy stay in his home because he couldn't find a room here in San Angelo. So we get on the phone, we make it work.
Great, great, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number 11 is consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a lease agreement with the San Angelo Performing Arts Coalition.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council. That is the substance of this item, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute the contract. And what I'm prepared to do is kind of hit the highlights of the contract for where we are at this point and get your feedback if you, if any of these rub you the wrong way. So to begin, parties to the agreement, City of San Angelo and the San Angelo Performing Arts Coalition. The property, the West Mezzanine area in City Hall, approximately 1,670 square feet, and of course, access to common areas. Initial term, 20 years with two optional 10-year extensions. The rate, $1 per year. The permitted use, general office use, including performance of SAIPAC's management obligations under the Develop and Development and Operating Agreement. Recall that we have an agreement with them to develop and operate the auditorium. This is the second agreement which allows them to occupy so that they, to assist in fulfilling the obligations under that agreement. Tenant agrees to take the property as is, that improvements to those, to that property are, is their obligation. Tenant agrees that they will reimburse us for common type costs, for example, electricity, water, that kind of thing. And there is a formula for allocating that cost contained in the agreement. The tenant will perform the obligations under the Development and Operating Agreement. It specifies that they commit to do that in this agreement also. Lease assignment, this is important, that lease assignment is addressed. They will not assign this list, except as permitted within this document. Farther down in the document, our commitment is that we will not unreasonably withhold that assignment. And in the event that assignment is made, the San Angelo Performing Arts Coalition is still obligated to fulfill its obligations in this. They are not relieved of the obligations within this lease or in the operating agreement that we've already executed. Now, that's important because they are contemplating assignment of the occupancy portions, the occupancy, to the symphony. The symphony will occupy the space and through, and so we are immediately contemplating occupancy by the symphony in a sublease or an assignment. It's important that we're comfortable with that, those terms, so that that can occur. Tenant will prepare and deliver an annual report detailing their activity for the year. In the event that there's some sort of tragedy where the building collapses or is knocked down in some fashion, there are escape clauses for both parties.
Sorry, back up to the assignment. How broad is their ability to assign? Does it have to be someone associated with performing arts? I mean, could it be an oilfield company?
Good question. I think there is a language that...
One or more of its member entities appears to be on the top of page five. It might be limited to that. I believe that's the intention.
Thank you, good question. One of the entities that may, that are partners in the coalition or are part of the coalition. There's a, there's mentioning here about default. SAIPAC is obligated to satisfy the requirements in this lease and the operating lease, and default in one creates default in the other. Our obligations include structural, outside walls, that windows, that kind of thing. But within the, within those boundaries, their obligations exist for maintenance and upkeep. However, janitorial, we might participate as partners in janitorial. We have a service in City Hall already. They might choose to utilize our service, and then we would allocate that cost. It depends on what they deem in their best interest. Unless I've missed something, or unless I've not covered something you're interested in, those are the highlights of the agreement. And again, what you're considering today is delegating authority to continue to negotiate and execute to the city manager. And so that, it's important. If you have terms here that you think need to change, now would, now would be a good time for us to know it.
Mr. Morrison?
The way I understand this, Michael, is that the city would still be responsible for all insurance on the auditorium as far as the rest of our City Hall? So we would still be buying the insurance for the building?
Well, this agreement does not address auditorium issues. This agreement is strictly associated with the mezzanine, except as it relates to SAIPAC's obligation in that other agreement.
Who would be paying for the insurance on the auditorium? The taxpayers or SAIPAC?
I would have to look that term up, but, Rick, do you remember that?
Do the taxpayers pay the insurance on the City Hall?
They do now, yes, sir.
Is the auditorium part of the City Hall?
Yes, sir.
So would it would be, would the auditorium be exempt from the rest of the City Hall? Or would the taxpayers be responsible for the insurance on the City Hall complex?
Well, this, taxpayers would be responsible for the insurance on the building, but there are additional insurance requirements associated with activities within the building. And that would fall to SAIPAC or, and/or to the people who utilize the facility. That's the way that is now. For example, if we decide, if I decide to rent the facility and have a concert, I am obligated to certain insurance requirements.
Liability insurance, not building insurance. I'm curious about the structural insurance on the building.
Most likely the structural, because the city still owns the building. That would still fall under our overview of insurance, which we have for all of our structures.
I also understand that we would be responsible for the maintenance, for the soundness of the building, for the soundness of the auditorium, for the soundness of the mezzanine that they are renting for $1 a year. We're still responsible for the foundation, the roof, all of the wall. We're still responsible as a city for the mezzanine.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Will they pay any type of a tax to us, or will they still continue to enjoy a tax-free standing?
SAIPAC is organized as a nonprofit entity. The only payments that I'm aware of that they would make to the city are contained within this agreement, and that is specified at $1 per year.
So we're still responsible for the building. We're still responsible for the insurance on the auditorium and the mezzanine that they are renting for $1 a year. We're still responsible for the soundness, and if there's any problem, we're still responsible to rebuild it. But yet, for $1 a year, they get 1,600 foot of some of the prime real estate in this city. They get to run the auditorium, they get to set all the fees, they get to collect 100% of the money, and we, as a city, have all the responsibility to take care of it for $1 a year.
Michael, was there a clause in there about the setting aside of some of the funds toward maintenance?
There is. That is a different agreement, though. That is not what is in front of us today. And so, a couple of things. First of all, I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be to discuss the details of that other agreement.
But yet, you expect us to make a decision.
I'm asking for direction on this agreement that's in front of us. The complaint you have with that other agreement is a decision which council has already made.
The complaint I have today is that we are living this to these people for $1 a year for all of these 20-year periods. We're still responsible for everything. Our taxpayers still have to pay for everything, yet they get 100% of the profit, and they set the charges, except what they want to give back to us. I've got a call in to a banker and also to a car dealer, and I think I can get us $2 a year for this to give them this 1,600 foot. I can double our lease. Would that be acceptable?
Would it be a good idea for this item to be brought back? And Michael, I'm just speaking for you, you go ahead, but to bring this item back in conjunction with that other agreement, Dwayne, because I think it looks like council would benefit from looking at those together.
I think it's absurd that taxpayers build this building, maintain this building, taxpayers give us money on the half-cent sales tax to restore this building, and then we turn around and give it to someone for $1 a year, all the profits, the naming rights, the selling of every seat, every door, everything they want to sell, but yet the taxpayers are still on the hook for insurance, maintenance, foundation. All we do is pay, we get nothing back, and I think it's absurd. I will not support this.
I don't think I can go back and walk through the other agreement. So I think to be able to show how the package works, you really may want to bring it back so that you can explain some of the other things. The only way to really talk through this is to understand if they spend $2.5 million improving your building, and it's still your building, that's $2.5 million that that nonprofit is giving the citizens. So somewhere in there, there's a balance toward what you're getting for a lease and what you're receiving for the citizens. But let's not, I don't want to debate that without actually having some of those facts in front of me and being, and kind of revisiting what the whole package looks like. And that's how I feel. Is that okay with the rest of you?
For this $2.5 million that they are investing, though, they also have been given the rights to sell, naming rights in that auditorium. They are going to put forth $2.5 million, but they plan to sell naming rights to recoup that $2.5 million. So, you know, let's keep all these facts straight.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a gimme. It's they're putting money forward and then they sell.
Let's have the debate when we have all the, let's have the debate when we have all the facts. There's nobody that's going to give them $2.5 million for the naming rights on the city auditorium. You got $60,000 for the Coliseum. So let's not, let's stay out of hyperbole and get back to the facts and do that when we have the facts. So I ask that you bring this back at a future date when we can look at this kind of in total, because I can't remember the pieces well enough to go with authorizing this part without kind of revisiting all of it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Let's move to item number 13. You're still on the hook, sir. Discussion and possible action on costs related to the Texas Municipal Retirement System Cost of Living Adjustment Increase.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We've had an inquiry from a council member about changing the benefit for, in the retirement system, up from the current benefit of 50% of COLA to a 70% benefit. To summarize, what that means is that retirees, subject to some computation methods that are contained in state statutes, in general, receive a benefit, an increase in their benefits equivalent to 50% of the Consumer Price Index. So if the Consumer Price Index goes up 2%, someone in the pension system, subject to the computation methods in state statute, would receive a 1% increase in their pension amount, their monthly pension. A few years back, as our pension contribution rate began to increase, continued to increase, when we expected it to level off and even decrease, we discovered, we started, TMRS started talking to us about where those rates ultimately might need to be. At that time, that, those rates were contemplated to be as high as 25%. And so we considered and acted on reducing the benefit level to help control the growth in those rates. The first step we took was to change the benefit that we offer, that we pay for, and that employees and retirees receive through TMRS, from a 70% Cost of Living Adjustment Benefit to a 50%. And that helped bring that contribution rate down, helped slow that growth. Since then, TMRS has done other things to help control that growth, and we are in a relatively stable environment now where our rate is approximately 18.93%, or our rate for 2013 was 18.93%. And so the question we had was, what would it take to move us back to that 70% benefit And so what we've, there's lots of possibility out there for discussion, for discussion how the statutes control TMRS, what the actuarial result of various benefit changes would be. So rather than try to cover questions that weren't answered, we've gone straight to a, an answer for this question, and we'll consider if we need to go in other directions, where we might go. So the current TMRS rate, or the TMRS rate for the calendar year 2013, 18.93%. If we were to move to a 70% COLA, TMRS would estimate that rate to be 22.26%. That's the rate we pay on wages. We pay a dollar in wages, we send 19 cents to TMRS as the employer portion of the retirement contribution. The employee also sends 7%. If we were to change to a 70% COLA benefit, that rate would change 22.26%. That's an increase of approximately 3.33%. And I've asked the budget folks to give us an estimate for what that would cost on an annual basis across the organization and across all funds. That would be approximately $1,035,000. The biggest piece of that would be in the general fund. And so the question...
What's the cost now at 50%?
What, do we send to TMRS now? I don't have that number in front of me, I'm sorry.
3% is a million bucks. So you can, to some degree, you can...
Five to six times that. Five times that would be approximately $5 million that is sent. Six times that would be approximately $6 million. And so it, thank you, Mayor, that is probably in that neighborhood, five to six million dollars a year. That's the employer side. The employees also send 7% or a little less than half of that.
I mean, the program is set up to be 7 and 14, isn't it?
Yes, sir. 7%, 2 to 1 match. And so what we'd like to see in the long term is a rate at or near 14. What we have is a, going back 20 to 30 years, an actuarial method that did not pre-fund some of the benefits that are in the current slate of benefits. In other words, you save now for expenditures, payments you anticipate making later. The city paid all that TMRS said to pay. The actuary working for TMRS did not spot a trend associated with benefits that would have resulted in suggesting that some of these benefits be prepaid. Those benefits were funded on a pay-as-you-go basis. And about five years ago, TMRS started looking seriously at this. The rates continued to go up. It was not a San Angelo phenomenon. It was occurring that way across the state, especially in mature cities, cities which had been in existence at their current employee levels for an extended period of time, where they continued to make the contributions, but their unfunded amount or their needed, their new contribution rate continued to increase. And so they looked into it, identified what the problem was, and they've addressed that now. And that's, and that has put to bed that issue of not pre-funding benefits that we anticipate to pay. But we are still living with 20 to 30 years' worth of not pre-funding some of those benefits. And so it's, you know, unless we take drastic action, it's going to take a while for that to pay out.
I mean, sometime before I came on the council, I was here and witnessed it, I think while I was running, the vote was made to increase this rate to help offset that funding problem, right? problem, right?
There was a vote like that that had to do with the FIRE pension. Council has not had to vote on this, except to decrease this benefit, and that may have been the one you, the vote you witnessed.
I just remembered them having to go to 20% or 21% or something like that for a handful of years to offset the miss on the actuary.
Exactly. We, and we were, internally, we were concerned about anything with a 2 handle on it. We thought that 2 was going to be poisonous. Anything that 20% or greater would be poisonous, and so we were trying to smoothly prevent that from occurring by taking early action, not drastic action, but early action. And so we moved from a 70% benefit to a 50% benefit. Now, one of the oddities in the way TMRS calculates cost of living adjustments contained in those state statutes, it's not a year-to-year computation. They go back to the date somebody retired, which may be two years back, or it may be 20 years back, and they recompute what the person should have been making, what their raises should have been, based on the current benefit. Now what that means is, Rick retired 20 years ago, let's say, and he's been getting increases in that annuity each year based on a 70% benefit. When we went and changed that to a 50% benefit, that changes that computation. When they go back and compute what he's going to get this year, they recompute all those prior years. And if that new recomputed 50% benefit does not exceed what he currently gets, then he gets no cost of living adjustment for this year. And so that was, that is the most difficult part of that change that was made, is that for retirees, depending on how long they've been retired, they were affected, some of them to the point where they are not going to get cost of living adjustments for an extended period, and some...
What are the legal constraints on us related to doing this for people that have been retired for a certain amount of time and not doing it for everyone?
There, you don't have that flexibility, because all of that is contained in state statutes. That flexibility doesn't exist. You can't give a benefit to one and not the other. One of the things we've talked about, I'm a member of an advisory committee with TMRS, the COLA adjustments was the hot topic. What do we do, what do we attempt to do during this legislative session to address COLA The constant theme we heard was that cities should have local control, that those local decision-makers should be able to decide what is in their community's best interest. And so flexibility and local control was paramount. Obviously, there are competing factions. Some want little control, some want lots of control, depending on what their viewpoint is. For example, employee groups want councils to be obligated to higher benefit levels and to have little discretion in changing that. Management groups want management and council to have discretion to adjust their benefits according to the needs of the community. And so there are competing factions from that standpoint, as you imagine. You know, we deal with that every year in our budget. As we, employees want the biggest raise they can get, the finance director wants a balanced budget, and council wants priorities in the community addressed through the budget. So there are proposals which come up in the legislative season, having to do with ad hoc type COLA increases, where communities can, the proposals would suggest communities can give raises that don't create this recomputed methodology. Those have not passed at this point. And TMRS is, has not, the board has not yet made the decision for which direction they will go for sponsoring legislation or not. It looks like they probably will not advocate for certain changes, and, but that board, the board has not made that decision yet. But cities do want the flexibility. Other cities, other councils see that as an issue. They see these older retirees who most need the adjustments being locked out when those, when those benefit levels come down. And other cities are facing this also. As they face these forward-looking rate increases, they also adjusted those benefits down, and to the extent that they changed the COLA benefit, their retirees were also affected. So we are not unique in that, in that.
I'm confused. Michael, straighten me out. TMRS board has not come out and endorsed an increase for the COLA. They, why, why wouldn't they? Is it because it takes money out of their operating and their existence, the monies that they're taking from these retired employees?
No. What they want is for you to have the flexibility to give the benefit that you think your citizens are willing to pay for. So the TMRS board deals with, there are 1,200 municipalities in the state of Texas, and most of those participate in TMRS. So TMRS, their mindset is one of administering benefits that others make decisions on. And so that board is interested in you having the flexibility to award and fund the benefit you think is appropriate in this community. And so what they have not taken a stand on is, should a legislative change, should they advocate for legislative change at the state level? But they're, they very much want you to have control. And so you could change this. You could go to a 70% COLA. What we're saying is, we're estimating that across the organization, it will cost us approximately $1 million a year to restore that benefit.
This year.
Yes, sir.
I mean, not, not over time, because more people retire, et cetera. But anyway, well, are there other questions for the gentleman? The thing I think we have to, myself, I just don't like us looking at little pieces of this without looking at all of this. When you're talking about a benefit that's supposed to be 7% payment by the employee, 14% payment by the city, city's currently paying 19% instead of 14%, and the expected rate of return on these investments by the TMRS is something like 7%. And if you go back and look at 1998 coming forward, you don't get there. You don't hit 7%, which puts pressure on, on the city to continue to raise the amount you have to put in the fund to have folks land where they're supposed to when they retire. So I feel that, you know, the fact is, you really need to be looking at whether the 7% number's the right number, the 14% number's the right number, the 7% return on investment is the right number. When you have interest rates since basically the early 2000s that are very low, and then you have restrictions on what you can invest in. If you had a 100% stock portfolio, which would be highly risky for folks that are planning for their retirement, you couldn't hit the 7% return over the last 10 or 15 years. And so that's the point I'm, I'm making, is I think we need to be careful. We would raise this rate, which I, you know, I wish we could parse things somehow, and he's saying that we really can't legally. In other words, if you've been retired 10 years or longer, I wish there was some way we could help them without endangering everybody's retirement or, or putting an undue burden on the taxpayer in the out years, five years from now, 10 years from now. I think that this number is going to be a tough number to overcome. And so I'm worried about taking little pieces of this and acting on them without forcing a discussion and a look into the whole thing, because you're going to spend $1 million to help make this happen, but that $1 million is the least this will ever cost you, because each year you're funding a 70% COLA with more people in the pool.
Well, that is true for the foreseeable future. This number, unless I'm mistaken, includes an amort, that, what you've done there, when if you go to a 70% benefit, you've increased your liability. And in computing this, they have amortized that liability. There's a current benefit impact, and then there's a future benefit impact. That future benefit is where that debt exists, and you're amortizing that over some period of time. They've probably used 20 or 30 years in here.
Okay.
And beyond that time period, you would be completely pre-funding that liability, and so that obligation would come down.
Yes.
But that's 20 or 30 years out, and...
Anyway, are there other questions on this?
Mayor?
I just have a comment. I agree with everything that you said, Mr. Mayor, and I don't see that there's any way possible we can put this into effect this year. I do want to look that in our budget process for starting next year to see, but I do want to look at the whole picture. But I wanted to make the statement that, you know, we can only do what we can afford to do, but the other side of that coin is, the less that we do for our retirees, we are forcing them into the programs, the indigent-type programs, and, you know, money that has to be made up there. So we've got to seriously consider this, and seriously consider as to how, on a regular basis, our retirees can look forward to some type of increase instead of, well, maybe, like you said, the way it's calculated prevents them from getting something every year. That I totally disagree with.
Well, you're absolutely right that we force people into these indigent programs. Cities without any kind of COLA benefit are concerned that they're, they are predictably putting their retirees into a poverty-stricken situation. If you don't have an inflation-adjusted pension, some sort of COLA benefit, then you are planning for 30 years down the road, 20 years down the road, that that pension will have half the buying power that it does today. And so I think there's general consensus that some sort of COLA benefit is appropriate. The question is, how do you fund it and retain local flexibility, local control? And so, and in addition, Mayor, you talked about looking system-wide, or not just looking at one term, but looking at the, our entire TMRS situation. I don't know whether you remember, but a few months back, you asked for a review of our pension systems, both TMRS and FIRE pension. That is still on the to-do list. We haven't forgotten that. So we do think that we will be having, we'll, having a discussion about both of those pension systems, and we can talk about it more. Oh, and one other thing, I absolutely think that it should be part of a long-term planning strategy. What do we want that benefit to be? And then work toward that through some kind of a long-term planning strategy.
And we'll be, we'll be talking about that a little bit later on, as far as some of the plans that we have on, from a strategic planning standpoint, but also, and that's to address short-term plans for the next fiscal year, but also into the future. This is one of the items that we'd love to be able to discuss also and see how we're going to be able to fund that too, so, and that's, we'll discuss a little bit further.
I would like to see you and Mr. Dane and other members be working on this for our budget workshop sessions this, I'm already into 2013, excuse me, that's coming up, so that we can have a better handle on and a better answer for our retirees out there.
Well, we're looking at a workshop actually midway through, in January, is what I want to discuss with all of you, because I'd like to get at least a full-day workshop from, from everyone, and that way we can set some pretty good direction as far as what we want to do, short-term, long-term also.
Folks, this is a discussion and possible action. We can move forward with no action, or I need to get the council's decision, what they want? Okay? Mr. Morrison?
Why couldn't we go with the 60%? Why would we have to go to 70?
Good, good question. That is not an option allowed at this point, that those restrictions or those options exist in state statute, and that would, for example, be a legislative action that might be proposed, or that someone might advocate for, that we don't just want a 50 and a 70, we want a 60.
Didn't the, didn't the city pick up almost $2 million in property tax increase last year over the year before?
One.
One million?
One million. And then, but I mean, then you voted in your budget accordingly. That's what makes it hard to do things in the middle of a year. You know, I, I mean, I, I feel like, and I'm, you remember the other day, the dental deal? I mean, you know how the council takes these positions and says, over time, we want to reduce property tax rate as one of the, you know, I believe that one of the things that needs to happen toward the budget process, Mr. Morrison, is that you would say, we want to, you know, we want to figure out how to get the dental plan made available to the retirees in a similar way to the way it's done for employees as part of the upcoming budget cycle. And you would say, we want to address this COLA issue, and, and you would, as a council, commit yourself to getting that done. But you would do it when everything's on the table, so that you're looking at, how do you save money somewhere to fund $1 million for this? Or, or, you know, when, when the system's supposed to be 7% from the employee and 14% from the city, and now it's about to be 22% from the city, at what point is it 10% from the employee and 22% from the city? Or 10% from the employee and 19% from the city? Or, I mean, we should be, in my mind, looking at this bigger, so...
And I, I agree with that. That's all well and good, but we, we continue to talk about this, and we continue to push it forward, and we have workshops, and our retirees continue to fall further and further and further behind. So it's, you know, it's a, it's an arbitrary thing for us. We can talk about it, and talk about it, and talk about it, but our retirees are having to deal with this when their water bill hits, or their gas bill, or their electric bill, or their insurance, or their Medicare increases, and all of these different things.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to, if I may make the motion, that we form a committee, the same as we did with the Gatsby 45 Committee, for these numbers to be worked up, this, this committee to meet, to include our city manager and Mr. Dane, and people, like you did on the Gatsby 45, to retired people out there who have done health benefits. The first one that comes to mind is Charlie, or Bond, Charlie Bond, who was an excellent help to us in the Gatsby 45, but some individuals out there to look at this, to have, for the council to have numbers and stuff at their workshop, and get this started now, so that it's not a continued talk about. We'll be working on it and have a workshop in January as...
Address it.
Mr. Valenzuela, do I need to make that a form of a motion? Or just give direction?
That committee had, that committee had a couple of council members, I believe, that served.
Yes.
Let me just add that I'm with you and the mayor and Dwayne, because I think, you know, these retired folks that, since I've been on council, we, I don't like to hear, and I understand where they're coming from, because when they talk about broken promises and broken, and promises and promises, you know, I feel for them. So I think, let's, let's get something going. I mean, if it's next month at a workshop, let's move forward. Let's not, let's quit talking about it and, and be as much support to them and our employees as we can, so...
But at the same time, in fairness to the staff, to the council, to everyone involved, you know, you only passed a budget two months ago. To then be saying, we want to add a $1 million expenditure immediately, it's like, well, why wasn't it part of the budget then? You know, it's, we're not eight months into the new year, we're two months into the new year. That's why I'm wanting to say, this is a worthwhile issue, but let's do it right and, and move, and then, and then what I'm also asking for is, you know, when you say, well, let's not kick the can down the road, or let's not let this fall off the radar screen, that's why I'm saying, okay, let's commit, that we're going to deal with the dental issue for retirees, and we're going to deal with the COLA issue for retirees as part of the 2013 budget, that we commit to make that happen. So we don't let it go away, we don't let it not be dealt with, we just educate ourselves well, do it as part of the whole budget, and then make something happen on these issues. That's what I'm asking us to do, so...
Daniel, would you anticipate that we might have, if we wanted to cover, should we cover more than one issue, more than TMRS, for example, the dental issue?
There's been a couple of issues that have been brought up. You know, if we're going to take this, again, and we are going to take it to our planning workshop, which, again, I had wanted to schedule for mid-January, this will allow us to at least have those figures prepared, but also in the planning processes to attach those funding mechanisms to each one of these, these plans that we have too. So that's something that I think would be a great idea to actually address. Right now, we've talked about dental, and now we're talking about the TMRS issue, is to come up with those figures, those numbers, so when we do present in, in January, we'll have an idea. And as far as start looking at the funding mechanisms, how, how we're actually going to do that, I have some, some recommendations also.
Help me out. Does that mean work estimates and bring them to the planning, and then go with some kind of an action-oriented committee? Or do we need to form this committee in advance of your retreat?
All we need to do is come up with figures. The, the deal here is that when we meet in January, we'll kind of, we'll discuss, and especially, we'll be discussing... especially, we'll be discussing also CIP and priorities at that, at that point, too, is to kind of determine how we're going to fund it. So, instead of, Lee mentioned, instead of talking about it, we really do need to plan and attach the funding mechanisms, and that's what the strategic planning workshop is going to do for us in January. Okay?
All right. Mr., would you walk me through while you're here, the next item, number 14? Is that a...
Number 14 is just a reminder that while we have allocated monies in the budget, we have not, for capital issues, we have not decided how those are going to be spent. And so, this is just a revisit that we are going to need to have those discussions and make those decisions. So, 14 is just a reminder that we have that process in front of us.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I believe we have some comments from the audience on 13.
I'm, I'm quite open to public input, no problem. Okay? I'm treating it as a discussion item, but so that, based on what I'm seeing as consensus...
I just didn't want to go on to 14 when we hadn't concluded 13.
I don't mind at all, I don't mind. But I'm treating it as a discussion item, based on what I feel is the consensus at council in preparation. Please come forward.
I'm Russell Smith, retired police chief. Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. City Manager. First and foremost, I would like to tell you that one of the greatest concerns that this issue brought up originally, dealt not only with us here, but everywhere, is that they can make a decision in Austin, and we can lose this retirement system. So, we need to be very careful. This doesn't have to do necessarily with what we're talking about right now, but when we talked about making changes, the actuarial firm that was hired did not catch this for the 20 years that I was involved in studying that retirement system. I talked to them, I talked to the people in Austin, and then all of a sudden, we have this issue. Our issue is compounded by the fact that San Angelo did not pay its employees. They paid 40 to 50% lower than other employees in the cities that you benchmark yourselves against now for your current salaries. So, what happens is, you have those retirees prior to '99 that retired, making these much lower salaries in the beginning. That puts them in poverty level. If y'all will remember, some of you, the statistics I brought for, I believe there were about 100 of our employees that made 500 or less retired. So, when you talk about a dental issue that costs $500, think about this. And these were the people main, I mean, throughout the city. I mean, we have policemen retired at these terrible rates, because, but the, but the thing is, is we die, you're going to lose this issue. I mean, you won't have us. But you need to remember that, because every time you raise something $10, what's $10 to some of y'all is real money to these people, and it, and it affects them. So, from the retirement standpoint, the retirement system standpoint, be very careful about endorsing any changes down there in Austin, because many other, many companies had problems in their pension systems, and we need it so that if, no matter what happens, and that's what I'd like to say first. Second, is about this. Those are big monies, and don't think we don't understand that. And we do understand it. But those people at the bottom are the ones not getting paid. They don't get any extra money. So, the ones with $500 don't get any, don't have the ability to ever get a cost of living raise, and so, the people that retired yesterday can. This doesn't make any sense. So, I think holistically, looking at your retirees, as Mr. Farmer's done by bringing these two issues forward, that when you start, I mean, let me just tell you this, out of that committee on the, on, on the issue before, not one positive thing happened for the retiree. You hurt the retirees. And in one year, you took away their, their COLA, you took away their, you made the, took away the pharmacy, and, and for us, that was a great benefit, and the insurance company getting involved made it go up 10 times more than what it was, or eight and a half, whatever it was. But on the retirement health insurance coverage, somebody designed in one year, in one month, that the retiree would have to pay as much as 10 times more than the, than the current city employee for the dependent coverage, in one month. This, it looks like to us, and we're just, we're not just country bumpkins, as y'all know, I mean, some of you, but we, we understand what all that was. That was designed to hurt us. It did hurt us. So, when you're talking about a cost of living, I'm just expressing that a lot of these people aren't ever going to get one. But you got to be careful what you do with the system, because we don't want to lose the whole retirement system. There was a lot of changes that hap, they tried to implement before Enron and WorldCom, and I went to Austin, and I lobbied against some of those. So, we didn't have that in the Texas municipal retirement system, what the schoolteachers had, that loss. But anyway, we understand, and I, I wasn't, I only came because somebody called me this morning, again, I'm sorry, and, but that's kind of how I look at it, is that we've given these people a certain thing, and they think they're getting it every which way. They think they're getting hammered every which way, the retirees, especially the older ones. One thing to bear in mind, that y'all may not be, remember or know about, the city of San Angelo, the police and the fireworks are the only ones that were 2 to 1, 7% prior to '95. And when Stephen Brown retired, they raised it, so all the city employees got that. So, many of these retirees I'm talking about do not have the 7%. It's a sad deal. I'm embarrassed by it.
Well, and we're not able to parse it, which is very frustrating, I mean, listening to what he said just now. Be nice to be able to say, "Let's go in at the year 2000 and take anyone retired before that and do X." Would cost less, it would be effective...
I mean, I understand it.
Anyway, it's...
Mayor, I mean, I understand it, Mayor, and I understand this issue probably as well as anybody up there, because I studied that system for years. But holistically, if you look at everything, wow. Just think if you were one of them guys on $500. Thank y'all.
Okay. Other public input?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, sir.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing my wife and I to enroll in the dental insurance. It ma, it makes a big difference, a crown and a root canal, two grand, that's hard to come up with. When I started for the city of San Angelo, I'm a retiree, my name is Greg Manley. Started in '77, I started for $3.50 an hour, and the contribution was 3%, if I'm not mistaken. So, a cost of living makes a lot of difference to people. I haven't had a raise since 2009, the cost of living raise, on there, so, any consideration would be appreciated, but thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, sir.
Will Chief Smith be invited to work with their committee once we form it?
Yes.
No reason not to, for sure. Okay. Let's move then now to item number 14, and this is a discussion and consideration of fiscal year 2013 budgeted capital, capital funding.
Good morning. I have a brief presentation for y'all to go over the capital planning coming in 2013. Recall, we're, we're starting the CIP process to prepare the 2013-2018 plan, but as Mr. Dane stated, we do have funds available in fiscal year 13 to allocate towards, towards projects. So, recall that the CIP is required by charter, it's a planning document, not a funding source, so as we start making these plans, we'll have a, a list of, of all needs in the organization. It's an annual plan that we update every year, but with a five-year horizon, and it includes improvements as stated. We have a, a brief calendar before you. One thing that's important to note, in the city charter, it states we have to start discussions about the CIP in a timely manner, and that would be five months before the budget is adopted. So, that would be April of 2013. You'll see here that we are talking about having it adopted by February. It's a, it's staff's recommendation that it's a better use of staff's time to get the CIP really finalized, lots of detail in it, and completed, so that all staff time can be spent thus on the budget preparation, so we're not dividing our resources, and we have two really good documents to move forward with. So, that's the reasoning for this, this calendar before you. Recall that in 2012, we had almost 1 and 3/4 million dollars available for capital projects. We funded several items, we do have an update on those, if you so desire, but in the 2013 budget, largely the same amount budgeted for, for future needs. In the past, in discussions, we've talked about the, the projects that, that need immediate funding, that could be eligible for that 1 and 3/4 million dollars. Street reconstruction, recall, we did the 3-millon overlay streets in 2012. Drainage remediation, recall that we had the Avenue P drainage remediation project on there, partially funded. We've also talked about adding Fort Concho improvements to that, as there's a great need there, and as city council gave direction during the parks master plan discussion, we added South Concho Park, as discussed at that time. And recall that there was also an item for an emergency response task force to deal with brush fires and anything that might come up like that. Other information that will impact how we prepare our CIP in the coming year is any revisions to the hotel occupancy tax. That could impact what funding is available for, for CIP. Also, changes in the mandates for stormwater fees, and recall ambulance fees. As discussed with city council, fees were raised, but could be used for a variety of things, could be CIP, could be, it's at the council's pleasure, so, just some information on that.
Okay, go back to slide. Okay, how does the HOT, Hotel Occupancy Tax, how does that affect the CIP? Where, I'm trying to think where it would affect the CIP?
It could be used for historical preservation, for example, at the fort. It could be used for maintenance at Texas Bank Sports Complex.
Okay.
And recall that we have adopted a budget with an anticipated change in the revision of hotel occupancy tax. The state law allows us to use it on things, our city ordinance is more prohibitive, so as there are revisions made, it will free up money that could be used for CIP, could be used for other things.
Okay. Stormwater, how could it be used as stormwater, because that's a quality issues?
I'll let Mr. Dane speak to that.
We, we've been hearing talk about, should stormwater, questions like, should stormwater fees be funding stormwater-related capital projects?
Quantity?
Pardon me?
Quantity, capital projects?
Oh, any.
Okay. To clarify, right now, we can't use stormwater on quantity, we can only use it for quality improvement, we can't use it for qualit, um, we can use it for quality improvement, not for quantity handling. We, we can't, because our, we didn't design it that way.
Well, I think, I think the, the problem that was point, being pointed out was that right now, stormwater projects are being funded with general fund monies, which might be otherwise used for streets, and should we examine or try to find a way to make those stormwater projects funded more with stormwater dollars? And so, for us, it's, it's a question, a puzzle to be solved, or a solution developed, or alternatives developed for council, that those stormwater projects are, are less competing or not competing for general fund dollars, because we have done something different with our stormwater fees. In other words, I heard a council member express dissatisfaction that we were using general fund money for projects that had to do with stormwater, and, and so, our attempt will be to examine what's, what we collect for stormwater, how it is utilized, and are there opportunities for utilization of those stormwater dollars for projects that would otherwise be competing for general fund dollars?
Okay.
We don't have the answer yet, but it...
Right.
And the thing is, is that we'll have a list of priorities, as far as, when we do have a workshop, projects that we'd like to take on, and we'll also have the possible funding sources that'll be available, and at that point, if you feel that that's something that's not justified, it shouldn't be going toward that, we can discuss that at that point.
Okay. You're new, and so, there's a history in the past in which, I think it was Kendall and I, again, identified problems with the stormwater fee, how it's used. It's used for mowing, and I mean, and then, I mean, it's just, it's, it's not real clear. It needs to be examined. I mean, from top to bottom, how we use that fund, and, and it just is not clear. There's some, you look at it closely, you'll see. Bring up some questions, really.
Yeah, we'll take a close look at it.
So, we need to look at it very closely, and that's why I was wondering, had some questions there. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And my perspective is also on that same slide, though. Remember that there's some, there's definitely a desire from council's perspective, as you're moving forward with this, that while some of these fees are going up, that there be a thought process about the tax rate going down. So, when you're looking at hotel occupancy tax revision, stormwater, ambulance fees, those are all, here's some money, but you also need to be thinking through, well, what's the impact of reducing the rate on this capital improvement project process? Because that's going to be something the council is very interested in, in this next budget cycle, is if we're going to increase these fees, then let's reduce the tax rate. And so, be sure you're thinking through that when you're, when you're doing this work.
Well, I'm very excited about the possibility of having a long-term planning session, having some goals out there to shoot for, and for us, it makes it much easier to do that, that, what is that next step?
Okay.
And with that, we did have a brief project update for fiscal year 12 was the first year we were, we set aside that 1 and 3/4 million for capital projects. Recall that there were the 3-millon overlay projects at 19th Street, 14th Street, and Main Street, and the drainage remediation at West Avenue P. All of those items are lengthy projects and are currently in the design phase, and so, and recall that Avenue P only had partial funding to begin. So, that's where we are on the 2012 funding, as we move forward into the 2013 funding. We wanted you to be aware of that.
Why are those moving so slow?
That is a small department, and the engineer with primary responsibility for that activity no longer works for the city. So, they have a vacancy in that department, and have had one for a number of months.
Okay.
So, that's what we have for you today. I think the, the biggest, the meat of this presentation is to know the 2013 projects that, that staff has heard from the city council to bring forward for funding, not necessarily any action today, but just to, to brief you on it as we start moving through the process.
I think the big thing here, of course, is we are going to have to come up with the priority list, and also, and I just use it as a, just the planning part of it's fine, you know, and you can come up with, actually, what amounts to wish lists if you don't have a way to fund it. And we need to make sure that we address those priorities and come up with a, I mentioned a while ago, funding mechanism, how exactly we're going to fund these projects. And that's something that, again, that we want to make sure we address during our workshop, and that way, we have a pretty good idea of how we're going to go about funding these different programs, and we'll go from there.
Okay, I have a request. I just can't remember dates that well, when I see that many dates. You just showed a bunch of dates. I do know that somewhere in February, February 19th, we approved the CIP. So, when a citizen comes to me and says, "I got this idea," well, it's a capital project. So, the, the idea right now is to get it on the CIP, because if we put it on the CIP, then we prioritize it, and maybe, maybe we get to that project, but it has to be in the CIP. There's a public meeting on January 24th and 29th. I need a calendar item. I, I need the most important date sent to me as a calendar item, or that, that meetings, maybe you don't know what time it is, but you can guess at it, so that I can go refer to these things and help citizens work with the CIP, and as well as myself. I just, that would help me greatly.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And, and you just, whoever wants to be a part of it, I don't, you know, just accept the request, I guess.
We've had increasing participation in the, the public meetings associated with CIP process, so we welcome your participation. The mayor attended last year, and, and I think the people, the citizens that were there were glad to see him there, and so, you'd be welcome also. And I think these dates are probably going to be pushed back. If we allocate our monies after we've set the priority, if we set those priorities in January, then these meetings will, these dates will have to slide back. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pencil these, I pencil these in, don't do it in ink, because I think we want to spend those monies pursuant to a priority-setting process, or I hope we do. And so, while this is the process that meets, checks all the boxes from a, you know, a compliance standpoint, if we're going to truly spend the money where the priority is, we need to set the priority and then determine where to spend the money. So, pencil these dates, don't, don't put them in ink, please.
Morgan, if I may, and Mayor, you asked a very good question, but can I get Clinton Bailey to come up here and just give us a two-minute summary on the, even the, the drainage issue that we have out there? Just for the sake of transparency, you know, it's been over a year that we're, we've been talking about it, and just, Clinton, if you could just very quickly, just tell us, give us an update.
Sure. On the millon overlay projects and the Avenue P project, we're probably 95% complete with the design on those projects. the design on those projects. As Michael mentioned, we did lose the engineer that was responsible for that design. We've also lost a couple of design folks that we're in the process of replacing, but those projects will be under construction in early 2013, both of the millon overlay and the Avenue P drainage project.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question in general, it might be for Daniel or for Michael. One of the joys of moving, you move boxes or pull out things that you hadn't seen in a while, and I happened to pull out the CIP projection project that was given to us 2007 to 2012. And I'm looking here at 2012 now to 2017. Of all of the projects that were presented to us in 2007, that were in this nice book and this presentation, kind of curious as to how many of those projects have been completed? What was actually spent versus what was projected? I mean, I kind of like to see what you guys sit down and you project that we're going to do, you're out there working and doing, but we never see, okay, we can mark this off the list, this off the list, or nothing's been done. We're just still talking about it, and we're going back, and now I'm talking about from 2012 to 2017. I want to see the history of the projects. The first pictures that I pulled up is the bank stabilization. I can visually look and see what's been done as far as that. I can see that. If I look hard enough, I can see some streetlight, you know, replacement and stuff. But the public is not necessarily looking at that. They want to know. So these comparisons, you know, this proposal that was put out in 2007 and listed all the streets, it listed everything, the projects, you know, more projects than we had money for. But of those projects, I would like to see what has been completed or is in process.
I think it's terrific. And I think Daniel touched on it, and I heard it, but if you hadn't been in our discussions, you might not have heard the importance of it. And that is assign a potential funding source to each of the projects. That's the difficulty we have, and that's why we continue to emphasize that this is a planning document. It helps us determine priority, but it's not a commitment to funding. And until the funding is identified and matched with the project, the projects languish in the planning document. So it is an excellent, excellent observation. We probably need you to move it once every couple of years so you can bring these up.
The public needs to see it. It needs to be on our website, what was planned, how many dollars that it took. You know, you talk about faith from the citizens and the transparency out there. This is an excellent tool.
It is a good question. And there are projects out there that were identified and were funded and have moved along to some extent, some to completion. But there are projects which were identified and funding was never identified, and so those projects still continue to show up on the list. So--
And that's what I want to do, I want to take a realistic view of of those projects that have been discussed over the years. And realistically, which ones of these can we fund, and how are we going to fund them? And what do we, what do we do to make sure that we free up those monies that will allow us to to fund these projects also? So again, I think that we have, we're going to have a lot to discuss during our workshop. We have a lot of ground to cover, so again, we're very hopeful we can get, get that done through a day workshop, actually, maybe even two. But it just depends on your time.
Okay. Okay, this is a discussion item, really, and so I would ask that we move forward. It's 12:15. Do you want me to keep fighting through the agenda? Do you want to go to executive session and come back? Okay, timeout. All right. Let me take us into executive session now. It's 12:16, and we'll come back and take care of items 15, 16, and 17. At 12:16, we're moving into executive session under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meeting, Subchapter D. Exceptions to the requirement that meetings be open, Section 551.087, to discuss economic development negotiations. It's 1 o'clock, and bring us back out of executive session and call the meeting to order and start with item number four, item number 15, correct? This is the first public hearing, consideration of introducing an ordinance amending the 2012, 2013 budget based on how things happen from one year to the next. Presentation from our budget manager, Morgan Trainor.
Good afternoon. Before you, you have an amendment. It's a large amendment primarily due to projects that span multiple fiscal years, and this is our big one of the year. It always falls about this time. So on page four, which lists your City of San Angelo proposed budget amendment additional information, that's where I'm going to start. I think it it gives the most information there for you. The first item listed there is budget carryovers. That's what I'm referring to. It's about $23 million. Grants are 419,000 of that. For example, the Rio Vista Park grant, Downtown Facade Grant, those kind of items. Citizen contributions, these are restricted donations made for potential projects of 311,000. Restricted items, these are items that have some law or ordinance attached to it that restrict the use of those funds. And so that is over $1.1 million. Capital projects, largely the the City Hall project, water and wastewater items that span multiple fiscal years, almost $20 million just for capital projects. And then the remainder there of budget carryovers is encumbrances. These are POs, purchase orders that were issued before October 1st, but the goods were not received until after October 1st. So we'll, we'll keep those funds allowed with that. And of course, this is only for for sizable POs that couldn't just be absorbed in their budget. So that's $1,421,000. So that's the total for budget carryovers. Then we have some new items, redesign of city website and supporting technology. That is, it stated it's general fund, it's actually communication fund, fund balance. This is money that was earmarked for the new website, and so that will be brought into the operating budget so we can take on that amount. Yes, sir.
May we talk about that?
Sure.
I remember that as $40,000. How did it get to be $90,000?
That's a good question, Mr. Morrison. The contract with the, for the professional services to redevelop the website is the number that you're remembering. The, we also, there are also some hardware issues that that go with that. So I think, I think one or two servers, I'm not up on what the technical needs are going to be, but the contract to develop the website was the $40,000 amount. There are also hardware, software, and training issues that go with that, and--
But didn't we vote to appropriate $40,000 to this, and now it's $90,000?
The vote was to go award the, to begin negotiations with the, with that company.
Up to $40,000. And now it's 90. You know, there's $50,000 more in this than there was when we voted on it.
You did not vote for a budget of 40-some thousand dollars. You did not assign a budget--
Do you have the minutes on that, Alicia? I'd like to see the minutes on that. Because I remember $40,000.
When, do we know when that was?
It's been six or eight months ago.
It was in May.
May.
I remember 40 myself, that's all I remember.
And that was the award of the contract, yes.
That was the anticipated cost for that, that contract.
But now it's 90.
No, that contract is still anticipated at that level, although the contract is not complete yet. That got hung up when we lost the old public information officer. The new public information officer has taken up that, and I think is nearing completion on the contract. But the amount for the contract has not changed. We had always set aside $90,000 to deal with all aspects of a new website.
I never, I don't remember 90. I do remember the 40.
That's because--
You never, you never had, you, you did not have $50,000 worth of the project brought to you. You only voted on, you didn't see all of it. That's what he's saying. You didn't see it all, you didn't realize it was a $90,000 project.
You know, we have too many deals like that where we approve something, and then we realize that we only got half of it. That, that, that's kind of a problem, a pattern I'm seeing.
Well, that was money eligible to be spent in a prior fiscal year that that we, that was, that departments did not spend. And so we had it set aside to deal with the technical or the hardware and software and training issues.
And I'm somewhat stepping out of my realm, but it's a company that doesn't sell servers. There is some support equipment necessary to support the new website. The, the contract we're referring to is, I believe, just for design, just for soft costs, not for any, anything to complete out the project.
You know, it would have been nice, though, when we talked about this, if they said, no, we want $40,000 just for this design, but there's going to be another $50,000 worth of hard equipment that goes with this. So you're actually voting on $90,000 because what we voted on was 40.
Morgan, do we know about it then?
No, it's not May.
Did we know about--
When we talked about the 40,000, do we know about the additional 50?
I'm sorry, I wasn't involved in that.
Michael, did you know then?
We didn't talk about it.
I knew, but it was not, it was not, it was not one of my areas at the time.
What the discussion entailed was, what are we getting for $40,000? And I sat over there on that side, because we were reversed, and I said, I have confidence that with that money, they will create a good website. They don't, they can't know exactly what the design's going to be. You need, you need to know how much you're going to spend first. And so--
The creation of the, the project as a need goes back into, before that, into the last fiscal year, or possibly even into the one before that. It was something when Ty came to work, he said, I've always been dissatisfied with the usability of the city's website. And so Ty began working on us right away for the need to improve that website.
And what I, I might suggest is, I believe the city clerk's having trouble, it's not pulling up as it should right now, but we can adopt this with the adjustment that we only approve 40,000 at this time. We can make the, the motion to adopt this budget amendment less $50,000.
I would suggest, I think this, just this, the contract alone is more than 40.
Okay.
So, but Anthony's--
I thought I remembered it pre, I looked up in May and I couldn't find it, looked up in April and couldn't find it. And the one I've got, because in March I got a new computer, so I don't, don't have the agenda. So I was thinking it was right around the first of the year that it was up, and--
Well, Mr. Morrison is correct, and that is how I remember also, but that is for only that aspect of the project. That the, the hardware and software and training that needed to go with it was not included in that number. So I think the 45 probably was discussed as part of the, the development of the website.
Who would have presented that item?
I think it was Ty.
Ty and Ms. Grindstaff.
So you think, I don't remember. I mean, I've slipped since then, but nothing was mentioned about the additional. Is that correct?
I don't remember when that first came to council, but the idea that we needed a website goes back at least two years.
I suspect they were setting that aside within the Ty's budgets over time, or they could cover a portion of it.
Well, it still doesn't make it comfortable to vote on, you know, when you're tacking on more.
We can remove that item entirely and bring it back another time. We're having trouble finding, so if it's the council's pleasure, I can move forward with the other items and--
I'd like to pull that, come back with it and give us some, when you find it on the agenda, put that in there with it so that we know what we voted on.
Certainly, yes, sir. The next item is the fire training grant. Recall, last meeting, we approved the acceptance of the $1.2 million in economic development administration grant, so this is to budget for that item. The next item, the fourth item, is rent and utilities for nursing office. Recall that there was a $20,000 emergency grant from RLSS, and so that will fund rent and utilities for our nursing division. Landfill gas collection and system debt, this is for the gasification system out at the landfill as a result of raising the rates that City Council recently took action on. We'll have those expenditures associated with that. The next to last item is Twin Butte South Pool Pumping Project. Recall that we approved the 2012 funding for that project. This is putting it into effect also for 2013 at an amount of $370,000 from Water Fund Fund Balance. And the last item there is neighborhood revitalization, roof, and neighborhood blitz programs. These are items from the Type B sales tax, the Development Corporation portion for affordable housing, $570,000 to budget for on the city side to administer those programs. So a total amount of over $26 million in expenditures, but of course, many of those have designated funding sources and have to be carried forward.
Morgan, let me ask you on that item there. Where does the 100,000 from the Health Foundation--
That was already budgeted. That's the--
But doesn't it fall into this, is it included with this amount?
No, this is just Development Corporation portion of those programs. I believe there was 100,000 from Development Corporation and 100,000 from San Angelo Health Foundation. The other item is already budgeted.
Okay, I think what I'm hearing is that we need a motion that approves this with the exception of the website funding. Okay, I have a motion for--
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve this with the exception of the website funding. And a second. Is there any further question or debate? Okay. Do you want to, you should sound it.
I'd like to see what it says.
It says approval of a recommendation from the evaluation team to award the website contract to Vision Internet in the amount not to exceed 40,000 for design of a new custom website for the city, and authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract.
Bingo.
Don't say anything about natty.
So again, what it is, is that they--
My motion stands.
What was the date?
May 1st.
May 1st?
I think we all probably will concur, we need to do something on that, but it may be unfortunately going back to square one and kind of redefining and figuring out the whole program. Because I agree, I, this is kind of a surprise, because as the--
We had a furniture deal work like this a couple of months ago, too. And it's, as I say, I'm beginning to see a pattern here. We're not getting everything before we make our decision, and that, it makes us look foolish.
Well, I, to the extent that we didn't make clear that that was only one aspect of the project, I think you're probably right. And so I think that it would be appropriate for us to bring back an agenda item which fully discusses what the new project manager anticipates would be appropriate. And now is a very good time, as he's trying to finalize that contract, and if we don't want to move ahead with that contract, now's a good time. But if we, if council is not fully aware of what staff anticipates the total cost to be, now's a good time to either come together and move ahead with the project or go in another direction. So Anthony, do you see a problem with delaying this two weeks?
Are the servers, are the servers usable for other services other than the website? In other words, does it help our city--
Email system--
Personally, I think we need to have this as a full-fledged discussion item on the entire scope and the topics and everything that's on there so we can kind of go through it. I don't want to, I understand, but I don't want to piecemeal this thing.
There's already been a motion made.
Let's talk about this and that.
So, so even to the point you're making, Mr. Alexandra, if you get a full, a full version of it--
I was like, maybe for a yes or no, just to--
But you will get the rest of the story, if there is a rest of the story. That's, that's what you were asking, so. All right, I have a motion to fund everything except the website funding and for that to come back to us. And I have a second, so let me go ahead and call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we'll look for the website funding piece to come back and maybe be fleshed out a little further. Okay. Let's go then to item number 16. This is the first public hearing in consideration of introducing an ordinance amending speed zones on U.S. Highway 87 frontage roads.
Do we have jurisdiction?
Yes, we do. Mayor, council, this is a routine speed limit request through Tech Dot. Tech Dot did the engineering analysis for the speed zone. North San Angelo, just the frontage roads, as you can see right here from 2105 roughly to Humble Road on the east side, and then the west side of the roadway roughly from Lake Drive to Humble. Proposal is for 45 mile per hour speed limit, which is typical of frontage roads in this type of situation around San Angelo. And as I mentioned, a speed study was completed by Tech Dot, and it was included in your background information.
What's the speed limit now?
I believe the speed limit's actually posted at 35, and as, as-- I believe the speed limit's actually posted at 35. And as, as we've moved through some of these things, we've found that sometimes those speed limits are posted without the city ordinance, and we're trying to identify those. But this is one that they've made a formal request for the establishment of the 45 mile per hour speed zone on.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Clinton, I'm trying to get my bearing straight. Am I headed north there on 87?
Yes, sir. This is OC Fisher Reservoir right here. And then, of course, you have the Walmart back down here, 29th Street, Coliseum back just to the, to the right.
So, that Humble Road, I mean, that area that you're looking at, the Axis Road, is that goes along where the Knights of Columbus Hall is? Is that?
Yes, sir. I believe that is right.
The little white spot down there is the KC Hall, way down...
Further down.
Right there, right there. That's KC Hall.
That's the KC Hall. Okay. I heard Mr. Hurstfield and Mr. Morrison motion and second. And to accept this as presented, is there further discussion? Okay. Let me call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I was, I was only going to vote for it if they would allow two-way traffic on the way to Howard College, but anyway. Item number 17.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm here today to talk about holidays. And as you're aware, the holidays are set by policy that you have approved. And each November, Human Resources takes a look at the next calendar year. And after analyzing where the holidays fall, we put out a list of the holidays for the next calendar year. If a holiday happens to fall on a weekend, then if it's a Friday, if it's a Saturday holiday, then we celebrate Friday. If it's a Sunday, we celebrate on Monday. Since 2006, there have been two different occasions where New Year's Day fell on either a Tuesday or a Thursday, and Tom Green County closed their offices on the day that attached it to the weekend. So, both of those times, we came before council and asked permission to grant for that one year only, that extra holiday. We're faced with that same scenario for 2013. New Year's Day falls on a Tuesday, and Tom Green County is going to close on December 31st of this year to make it a four-day weekend. And a number of employees have come to us and asked whether or not we were going to do the same thing as the county, and the only way we would be able to do that would be with your permission to do so. Now, if you recall, when we were talking about the last holiday change that we made, the only financial impact is in productivity. We pay the same whether or not the employees are working or whether or not they're off on a holiday. So, it, it comes down to a productivity issue and whether or not we are willing to give that day up.
What?
Yeah.
For the hourly?
Mm-hmm. They're paid eight hours holiday pay or eight hours work, whichever one. So, it's the same cost. It's just that they're not here working.
If they, if Monday, December 31st is a workday, and they don't show up, do they get paid?
No, unless they take vacation time or sick leave. But I'm saying, if it were a workday or a holiday, it's the same cost.
Okay. I got you. It's a question of whether we pay them, the not doing anything, or...
No, no. I got you.
Okay. If I worked for the City of San Angelo and I had to come in and work on that Monday, I'd be a little irritated with the City of San Angelo and the City Council because it's just a tough, I mean, you just gift up a four-day weekend, and there won't be a lot of productivity that day anyway. And so...
I'll be open. My shop will be open. All my employees will be working. If they're not, then they'll be taking a vacation day or not getting paid.
In my, my place, it'll be a clean-your-office-up kind of day. I mean, it's just, it's just low productivity at that time of year. Hit it hard on Wednesday and get going. That's what it'd be. But it's just a different kind of office. We're service and you're manufacturing, so...When you're in service, you start calling people, you start making phone calls to your customers, and they're not there. They're on their holiday. And so, our employees are going to run into some of that when they work with people in the City of San Angelo and make calls. They're going to be on holidays.
For the sake of discussion, I'll make a motion that we allow this closing of the city offices on Monday, December 31st, and Tuesday, January 1st.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to, to authorize this. And so, is there further discussion on the item? Okay. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. It's a three to three vote. So, it's four, three ayes, three nays. So, at this point, you would not move forward that way.
All right. Thank you very much.
Items, now we'll move into follow-up and administrative issues. Item number 18, consideration of matters discussed in executive closed session. If needed, none of that. 19, consideration of approving various board nominations by council and designated council members. The Fort Concho Museum Board, I'd like to make a motion that we accept James Dusek as, as sponsored by single member District 6, and Paul Stanley, sponsored by myself.
Second.
Seek a second, okay? Call for that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And now we go to announcements and consideration of future agenda items.
Obviously, you had the website thing.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
I would like to request that our city manager and chief of police and committee of their choice pull the report on the police, new police facilities that we got a couple of years ago, the feasibility study that was done. While those figures are still fairly current and accurate, I think the year that we got them was the year that we were facing a deficit in our budget, and it kind of hit us all as shell shock at that particular time. But I think it's a good time for the city manager, chief Vasquez, and a committee of their choice to pull this report, get back together, look for ways of funding, and what consolidation can be done in with Sheriff's Department or other facilities, and let's get moving back on this report.
Okay. Or even not necessarily adopting, anyway, if you, I mean, my position would be that that's committee work, not necessarily, not necessarily council work.
I want it to be high priority and not set aside. What this study was done and the figures that were proposed hit us in a minute's year, and they're growing dust, and we spent good money and time.
Yes, ma'am. But I mean, we were, we also thought that they would be under, operating under one set of auspices, and they come back with a number that was almost twice as much as...
Right. Yeah. You know, how can be scaled down to be an opable deal? But if you would do that and then set a time to, you know, it's going to be fitting in with the stuff for budget and proposals as to how to pay for this. I want it done.
The CIP part especially. So, whatever that timeline is, this should be part of that?
Yes. And the other thing I wanted to mention, I don't know that it's an agenda item, but I want to caution us that, you know, we received some good rain. We've got two years' worth of water, but we're still in a drought situation. And I really would like to see, you know, the billboards out here on Knickerbocker that says things for the city, just in notification, please understand drought level one and enforce, you know, just signs everywhere across the bottom of the TV, the scrolls and stuff that we've done in the past, Channel 17 or whatever. We're still in drought stage level one, and we need to be constantly reminding our folks of water conservation and making that really high educational items so that it's, it's not forgotten and taken for granted.
Okay. Other items, Mr. Morrison?
I've got 42 emails this last week from citizens asking on a petition to audit the Water Department. And after seeing 42 of those things, I feel that there may be, may be something to it. So, I'd like to get that on the agenda next time, and let's, let's discuss, because it may be, it may be time to do that.
On the water conservation, kind of piggybacking on that, remember, I had one that I brought up last time. Want it on the agenda. Doesn't have to be, again, on the next one. I just don't want it to be forgotten. About conservation methodologies and incentives and some of the funding and things like that, kind of is the whole package.
And Mayor, I want to reiterate on the idea of discussing that water billing late fee, where that came from, or how did we arrive at $25, and if we can maybe charge percentages of what the bill is instead. Again, I'm just throwing that out for discussion purposes, see what we come out of it.
And Alicia, you can go back on the minutes and find, answer that for him as well, because we went through that.
2005 and 2009, both, it was initiated and then re-kept. And when it was looked at in 2009, as to...
That's a good memory.
Well, the, it was something that I brought forward, so I can remember it.
Other items? Okay. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
I think Ms. Farmer might have nudged that in there. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.